...meeting for Monday, Tuesday, April 2nd, 2007-19. And I'd like, at this moment, like to call the meeting to order and also an acceptance of the agenda.
So moved, second?
A motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. Harris. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, good evening. Are there any walk-ins tonight?
That's right.
Please. I need you to come down to the microphone here and the table. If you don't mind, tell me your name and address.
Um...
There you go.
Would you like me to serve?
Any of those chairs.
Okay. My name is Ray Ash Legel and my address is 9 West Gate Lane in Situate, obviously. And I would just like to say that I would love if the town could look into providing some things for town meetings in the future. I have organized to do a physical upcoming one, but I would love to see it for, like, the special one in May, like as all of them in general.
It's a great idea. You know, I guess the question is how we can try to go about doing that. Jim, I know years ago, at one point, we did it, not on a regular basis, but it happened on usually large events. And I know my daughter, actually, through her high school, the sophomores were trying to do that for this coming town meeting. They were told they couldn't, so...
Well, I have organized it. They can. I'm trying to give... They have agreed to allow the kids to get community service hours to donate their time.
I also suggested to her that they might want to get TVs, considering it's the NCAA championship, so that people could go in and maybe watch.
Oh, well, can you...
Not that I want to, because I'm going to be there the whole night for the rest of the week, but that might be a suggestion.
There's probably a way to go with that as well.
I doubt that. They probably can make some funds for the classes if that's something they want to do. I think that's something we should try to entertain if it's a possibility, you know?
Who would run it? Who would organize it? That's the whole...
Anybody.
Did you say it's being organized?
I have organized it for this upcoming meeting next Monday.
Possibly Rec, maybe? I don't know.
Yeah, my first guess would have been Rec.
In the past, it was a booster club or something, too.
Actually, I have organized it several years myself and the citizens.
I nominate.
It's a great idea. There's no doubt about it.
Thank you for doing it.
And it would certainly allow some parents to be able to come for such a marathon. So, but thank you. And thank you for organizing it for Monday.
Okay. Thank you.
Lorraine, can you send an email to Maura and see what her thoughts are on it for Rec doing that?
Any other walk-ins?
Just happened.
Just happened?
No.
I just went to another line. Jim, now I'm just going to go to a part of the town administrator.
Couple of things real quick, mostly water, but we'll go through them pretty fast. If you go to Whittle's Walk, Whittle's Walk is now open. Had a good crowd on Saturday. You go up to the first hole and on the right-hand side, you will see a brand-new Sodishack. I want to thank Tom Hickey, Superintendent of South Shore Voc-Tech and the students at South Shore Voc-Tech. They constructed that for us. They built it at Voc-Tech, then they bring it down and they put it up. It looks great. The old one, we're going to take and bring over to the transfer station and use that for storage, some things. But thanks to Voc-Tech, it really came out pretty nice and they do it for cost, so it was pretty good savings for us, too. The treatment plant, the good news is the work on the treatment plant has been completed. The sand filter is done, the chemical feed tanks are done, sedimentation basins are done and the back system is done. They were finished last week. We started filling the plant up yesterday. They're going to fill it all back up with water. Eric worked overnight. When I saw him this morning, he was on his 37th hour at 11 o'clock this morning because he wanted to be there overnight as the plant filled up. It'll take a couple of days of running the plant to get all the bugs out, make sure everything's running correctly, plus they have to test the water as it comes out. But the treatment plant is scheduled to be back online putting water into the system next week. So Sean Anderson and Eric did an unbelievable job on that. Eric Langland is Eric's last name. Ryan Pavlik from Tyon Bond, our consultant, was on top of that project. It was very... The guys who went down, you went down and saw it, really a complicated project, but they did a really good job on the plant. Again, should be putting water back into the system starting next week.
And everything was resolved?
Everything we had to resolve was resolved. There are still issues at the water treatment plant, but the stuff that we had to fix hasn't been fixed. They've got to kind of debug it again as they get it back running again, but we'll have it up and running and getting it next week.
Are they going to, Jim, obviously dismantle the temporary filter system that's going from well 17A down? But is that something they, maybe you want to hold off on doing until...
No, because it's too expensive. We rented that system, so it's far too expensive for us to keep that. We will keep well 17 online until the treatment plant is back putting water into the system. At that point, we'll take it out of the temporary green sand filter and we'll run it back into the reservoir to dilute the iron and manganese, so it'll go back to the treatment plant. But that won't be shut off until we're done with the treatment plant, it's back online. Well 18 is close to getting its final approvals. That will be a permanent filter because we only use that on an intermittent basis and it's not that much water. It's a much smaller facility. So we'll keep that and we'll turn that on and off as we need it. But that's an emergency right now. It does not provide the water that well 17 does, so we can't flip off between the two. Ice pigging, starting the week of the 15th, we'll be back to ice pigging. We have $200,000. That'll be starting down on Kent Street near Gilson, heading towards the harbor. We expect about three weeks of ice pigging. The department's been putting in hydrants and flushing gates in anticipation of that to get ready for it. They've also been down on some side streets, like Eisenhower today, putting a hydrant, some of those side streets up there off Old Country Way that are dead ends. They're putting either hydrants or flushing gates at the end of those mains, so we'll be able to flush out those lines, clean those out. So hoping to get that done. Once that's completed, when we finish the ice pigging, we will then be starting the construction of the Oceanside Water Main. We won't do that until we're done the ice pigging to not put too much of a tax on the system. But the pre-construction meeting is scheduled and that'll start after the ice pigging. Two more things?
How far do we expect that to get? Because we got to Gilson from like the golf course.
We should get down to the harbor, I would think. Yeah.
For three weeks?
Yeah.
I think it was, the last time, was it eight miles?
Four.
Or four miles.
Plus, we'll get down to the harbor, then we'll be going off into the laterals, too, Tony. So I can get you the exact map when Kevin has it.
This is like three times more than...
No, same amount. It's... We had $200,000 last time. We spent about 90. So we have $200,000 again. So we'll go as far as it'll get us. And this time, we'll try to do a better video. Instead of having me do it, we'll have someone who knows what they're doing take the video. But people want to come look at it, it's pretty cool.
Great.
Last two things. Last minute, I told you we hired a new public health director, but I wouldn't tell you who it is. It's Andrew Shealy. Drew is a Situate resident. He lives down by the harbor. He comes to us with 22 years' experience in the Department of Public Health, the city of Quincy, 17 of which he was the Commissioner of Public Health for the city of Quincy. So he has a world of experience. We think he's a great hire. I want to thank Joan, Teresa, Lauren and Eileen for stepping up and running that office while they were gone. And Bob Clark did all the work, interviewing, vetting, background checks, getting these guys ready. He'll start Monday, so he'll stop at town meeting. He'll be around. So it's a great hire for us. I think he's going to do an excellent job. He comes with, again, tremendous amount of experience, looking to get back closer to home, so we're lucky to get him. Last thing, for those who don't know, the World Series trophy will be at the Situate Harbor Community Building tomorrow at 3:30. You can get on and have your picture taken with it. I'm expecting a long line, so you might want to get there early. And considering the start they've gotten off to this year, it might be the last World Series trophy we see for a little while, so...
Lorraine, can we get a letter to South Shore Voc-Tech to thank them for, not already, to thank them for the, from the board, for their donation of time? That's really nice. Is that okay with the board?
Yeah, absolutely.
They were down there on some cold days last week working on that.
Driving by, see them up there with their truck, trying to work on it. So, good for them. All right, great. Any questions of the town administrator? No? Let's move on. Let's go to a 7:15, update beautification commission pilot program. And I see Donna's here, Bangert. And anyone else on the beautification? Come on up, please. Thank you.
Hello.
Good evening.
Hi.
Oh, good, good.
Social media doesn't...
It's a big event.
No picture, didn't happen, right?
So I, Donna Bangert, Beautification Commission. As a member of the commission, I am fortunate to work with a number of very talented and dedicated individuals who keep flowers blooming in town throughout the year. And eight of those individuals also serve on the board as doing organization and administration. So two of them are here with me tonight, and I want to introduce you to Lori Hall...
Good evening, Lori.
And Sitska Humphrey.
Good evening.
And we are here because we are excited about a new program we are initiating called Plant Situate. And so I'm going to let them tell you about it. Lori?
Here we go.
Good evening. As we prepare to launch our campaign entitled Plant Situate, the Beautification Commission has three goals. To encourage a community-wide effort to keep Situate beautiful, to promote our Situate pride and spirit, and to engage townspeople of all ages in the planting of a flower chosen to represent the beauty and warmth of the summer sun in Situate. That plant is the marigold. It's been chosen as a native plant to America that blooms all summer long and is known for its hardiness, ease of growing, and cheerful colors of bright yellow and orange. The marigold can be grown in pots, flower boxes, and in gardens. To date, we've contacted the garden centers in town, asking for their support in stocking more marigolds than they normally would, and perhaps offering the plants at a discount to residents at some point. And we're asking school-aged children to create Plant Situate posters that will be displayed around town. And we will encourage our Adopt-A-Lot volunteers and town merchants in our voucher program to include marigolds in their summer displays.
So Sitska, you want to talk about the introduction?
Yep. Good evening. We are launching this program tonight through this presentation to you, and we hope to follow up this presentation with an article in The Mariner, hopefully with a photograph. We will contact as many of the civic groups in our town as we can, speak to our neighbors, attend as many meetings as we can, so that we can share this very exciting idea that has been met with so much support to people that we have spoken to. We ask you to help us spread the word and encourage participation. This town is very exceptional. We are the only town this size on the South Shore with a fishing fleet, with a wonderful school system that also wants to be engaged in this endeavor. We have a population that is kind and that's very supportive to all, and I believe it must be the fittest population on the South Shore, based on the amount of walking that we see. Our vision is that this flower will also symbolize the unity of our town. We also hope that this effort will bring attention not just to our town, but also to the beautification committee and the work that it does, and that it may result in an increase of volunteers for Ship Shape Day and also for Adopt-A-Lot. Thank you.
Any questions?
I don't know. It's great. How can we get people to, you know...
Look for volunteer, just look for marigolds. Spread the word.
Yeah, and you would like to see a pot of marigolds on everybody's, in front of everybody's house.
Buy their mailbox and, in my neighborhood over in the West End, I'm going to go up and down and encourage our neighborhood to have a clap road, be all about marigolds. And hopefully people will pick their neighborhood and spread the word as well.
And one of our volunteers will be planting a sign that says Situate, but it will be made out of marigolds right on, in the harbor, on Parkway.
There you go. And marigolds.
What do they look like? I can't be the only one in here that doesn't know what they look like. Do you have a picture of what I saw on...
I think a great location in front of somebody's office is ideal.
Well, I need to know. I don't want to plant the wrong thing.
It could be orange or...
This new thing called Google, kind of rusted rag.
Yeah, just Google marigolds.
All right, okay. If I put the wrong thing in front of my office, it's his fault.
We're available to advise.
For a small thing.
Can I just say one? Before you give up, can I?
Yeah, absolutely. Should I say?
If any group can mobilize and get this to spread, it's the Beautification Commission. You guys have done a great job. And I know that one of your current members, I think, does the stuff on Front Street. Is that going to be incorporated as well for the boxes?
Yeah, yeah.
And the little small way?
Yes.
That'll be awesome. This has great potential, and I'm glad the head of the Economic Development Commission is in the room, too, because it has great potential for a lot of things, so public relations and unification. Good job. And shopping bags, perhaps? And shopping bags, that's right. We got a... Marigold. Thank you for taking on this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Donna, thank you. Ladies, thank you. All right, so let's move on to a 7:20 discussion vote, acceptance of the Situate Dog Park donation. And I see Lisa Huffman's here. Good evening.
Hello.
How are you? Come on up.
Good, how are you?
Good.
With me tonight is Susan Grandin Dower. She is Vice President of Friends of Situate Dog Park and Daniel Joyce, who is our tread board.
So where are we with this?
The project was put out for bid, again, in February, and bids closed on March 7th. And we're very excited to announce that two of the six bids that came in fell within our budget. We have the $225,000 from the Stanton Foundation. We also have $48,700 that was granted to us from the Situate CPC. The bid that we would like to award came in at $282,723. The gap from the grants that we've received and that amount is $9,023. And we have a check from Friends of Situate Dog Park that we would like to award to the town to bridge that gap, so that you will, when Sean McCarthy speaks later, approve what he is asking.
Right. That's great.
Make a motion to accept the gift?
I was going to say absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to accept the gift from the Friends of Situate, is it?
Dog Park.
Dog Park.
Yes.
Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by?
Karen.
Seconded by Karen Canfield. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's great. So now we're going to... Sean, you're not up next, are you?
No, he's...
No, we're further down, aren't we?
He is, actually.
He is, but that's the last one on his list.
Well, why don't we start with that one first, then? That's one on this topic. How about that? Can't thank you enough. That's awesome.
Thank you.
To be able to have the opportunity where, obviously, it's a partnership between the donation, the town, and then also to be able to come up with it. And it's, I forgot, how many years? Is this three years?
We're, yeah, over three years.
Three years? No kidding.
It was three years in January.
Wow. Doesn't seem that long ago, but then, going back, I begin to realize it's three years. That's...
Right. Well, and you'll see us again, because the reason we were able to get to this point is we phased out the project, so we're doing the large dog park first as phase one and the smaller dog park...
Second.
Will be second, so...
That's a good idea.
We'll be back again when we've got enough funds for phase two.
I should say, how'd you raise the funds?
We have had a Halloween fundraiser at the Barker Tavern the past two Octobers. We've collected at the transfer station twice a year for the past couple of years. And just through generous donations from people who support us...
Great.
A resident of Situate who will remain anonymous sent us a $10,000 donation recently, so that was a big help.
That's great. Thank you.
Basically is covering the cost of this check we're giving you today.
We also have a significant online presence now, so very active Facebook page. Get, you know, donations that way, spreading the word. And we're also embarking on a brick selling campaign to continue with our fundraising as we're in the construction period. Hopeful that once people actually see a groundbreaking and the park beginning to construct, that will increase our fundraising momentum and keep us moving forward towards the second phase.
That's great. That usually does. So that's good.
That's a library.
Any other questions? Questions from the audience? Anyone?
Well done.
Sean, how about coming on up then?
Come on up.
We'll get to the next one on the dog park.
Is that rendering up on the board? I know it's kind of white. These ones actually came out kind of dark.
Together, they're perfect.
Perfect, thank you.
So you see the front dog park live?
Oh, actually...
Oh, we'll take it.
Nancy, actually, she'll go to Nancy, but that's, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
I only take cash.
Yes, so far.
Yes.
Where's the green here?
Yes.
So do I guess explain in a little more detail, like Lisa said, we, due to the cost to construct the dog park, last year we put it out to bid. In order to obtain the money to at least get the project started, we decided to phase it and create the large dog park, the parking area, the drainage, the fencing for the large park and some of the amenities within it. And then the utilities will be stubbed into the small dog park, so that you shouldn't have to enter the large park to construct the small one at a future date. Like I say, the parking will be completed in phase one, and then we'll also be looking back to Stanton Foundation, who's been providing the majority of the funds to construct the park in the future. If the park is maintained and they see it's thriving and flourishing, you have the ability to reapply for additional money to make improvements, whether it be solar lighting, bollards, or open construction for phase two, or at least a portion of things like that, shade structures, We did receive a substantial number of bids the second time around. We put this out to bid two weeks ago, and those numbers ranged from 282 to 538 for phase one and the infrastructure up front. The Friends are also going to donate the water service installation, so there'll be fountains in each park for the dogs, as well as a wash station on the way out. It is double gated, so you can't open both gates at the same time. So hopefully that'll keep the dogs within the park one at a time. But like I say, water features will be in both to drink at, and the Friends are going to pick up the cost of that that was bid in the current project. So it's actually a deduct, but a donation from the Friends once again to cover that cost. So this evening, we're asking to award the contract to Green Acres Landscape and Construction for the base bid of $294,512.
Questions from the board?
It just, Sean, how are you going to be able to do the small one without going through the large one?
When we decided to phase the project, we're kicking the fence in that's along the Go Green edge, if you can relate to the site plan. Go Green is to the right on the screen with the wind turbine. So we'll be pulling that fence in just about 10 feet, so that we can provide access along the tree line and the fence line to get to the rear park without impacting.
So is this a fence along the whole perimeter as well as an inner fence in here?
No, that's a ADA compliant walkway within the park.
That's right here. It goes like this.
Oh, so it's just the perimeter?
Perimeter here, and it goes down around.
So how do you keep the small dogs away from the big dogs?
Right now, we won't.
I think you got to close this down.
Until the small park is constructed.
So there's just one, yeah, I can't...
Mm-hmm.
So this is the only fence right now going on the whole thing?
Slide that bottom one up to eliminate the small park, yes.
And then afterwards, a second one will just compose this fence?
Correct.
And then this is the buffer you were talking about?
That's, that would be the access.
Right.
Yeah. The driveway entrance or the parking area at the end of that, to the south, will have a small detention area to manage the stormwater. So rather than disrupt any of that, we do have wetlands to the left...
Right.
And a buffer to worry about. So if we stay down the fence line to the right...
And the white area next to the handicap parking, is there a structure in there? Is that a door symbol or is that just a gate next to the two light bulbs?
Yep, the two handicap spots.
Then go south of that.
Yep.
What is all that?
I see fountain, dog wash station. I don't know if they called it out. There's a gate or the double gate.
So the white, the white is just a path? What is the white?
That's going to be the pavers. That's the area where we're going to do the, we're doing the brick fundraiser.
Oh, okay.
So that area will be...
But that's the main entrance to get in?
Yes.
Okay, and that's where the double gate? And the red structure here, is that just some shelter?
In the middle?
Yes.
We pulled that out of the recent bid only due to the cost we got for it when we bid it last year. So what we're hoping to do is either through fundraising, that becomes a gazebo, easy to purchase, easy to have delivered and installed.
Right. Looks great.
Yeah, there'll be benches along the walkway.
No.
Within the park. And we're going to try to selectively save some of the mature trees that are on site for shade.
Mm-hmm.
We're not changing grade much. The choices were limited on finished materials through the Stanton Foundation. It needed to be irrigated if it was going to be lawn. We saw Kingston had used pea stone, which we thought was going to get too hot in the sun, and the other option was wood chip mulch. So that's the one that you'll see constructed out here.
Karen?
Just two quick questions. So that other right, I'm sorry, I was helping with the computer, the little, you can enter from the driftway. You don't have to come through the parking lot? There's a second gate?
That's an access gate. That's for maintenance and things like that. It won't be accessible from the street because it's not double gated there.
Okay, so all the...
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Hmm, if it was Tony or John, yeah, where the handicap spaces are, will be the main entrance to the park.
And then if, I don't know, Sean, if you can just remind me, so this will be technically town, will remain town property, or how do you structure that?
Yes. We're currently working, me and Jim and the Friends of Situate Dog Park, on a maintenance agreement.
Okay.
On what the Friends will be responsible for maintaining.
Okay. And what the town, just so that's delineated, that's very important. Great. When would construction start? Did you already say that?
The contractor still needs to fulfill his obligations with bonds and insurance and the contract, and I'll be speaking with Stanton. I've been keeping them involved with monthly updates and I need to know the next steps in order to get the money from them, you know, to have it in the bank.
Good for you guys for the long haul.
Questions from the audience? Motion?
I think I misspoke, John, when I read that.
What's that?
Total to you.
I have 294,512.
Yeah, it's 282.
282.
723.
723.
Sorry.
So who wants to make a motion to accept the bid from Green Acres Landscaping Construction in the amount to, in the amount not to exceed $282,723?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Harris, seconded by Mr. Vignani, on favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
There you go, congrats, that's great.
Well done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My dog Brady thanks.
Thank you for the donation, please, by the way, thank you. All right, Sean, you're still here, aren't you?
Yeah, don't go anywhere.
How about if we go, oh, let's work our way back. How about the Egypt Beach parking lot layout, Sean?
See if you can go backwards.
When we were here two weeks ago to present the, or to award the contract for the construction or the repairs to the Egypt Beach parking lot, it was suggested we look at alternative parking layouts for the lot. They are posted on the board too, members of the audience to see. To start off, we tried to minimize major changes to the original design only because it had gone out to bid.
Yep.
So the top right one shows the original two-way travel lanes, 95 spaces. However, we came up with an idea to provide two five-minute parking spots up by the shower or to eliminate six or eight spots and actually create a lane to pull off out of traffic. This would maintain the basics. The lifeguard parking would remain the same. The southern crosshatched would remain the same where the lifeguards store materials. They rent a unit for the summer. And the striping at the entrance would as well remain the same. That gives us the most parking spots out of all the layouts. We looked at 45-degree angle parking in one way. That reduces the spaces to 65, where we could create a drop-off at the walkway entrance.
That doesn't seem to be too reasonable. That seems like.
Well, and if you look at the three other alternative one-way layouts, you do lose a lot of space in the corners. And another thing to think of is everybody who enters the lot has to drive up and by the entrance to the lot and circle through the lot and back around to park elsewhere. And I don't know what that will do for moving the cars all up to the entrance of the beach entrance to go around the lot to park. It's an option. You do have to narrow the lanes down. They go from 26 to 16. If you leave them too wide, it won't feel one way and you'll start to get people going in the wrong direction. So you try to tighten the lot up with that respect. That one generated a drop-off at the entrance and also at the end, striping layout, just as an alternative to look at. They all maintain the walkway up the middle as originally, and I believe that exists now in the lot.
What was the number of the first one that we're?
95.
The original?
Yeah.
95.
95, oh, wow, so it does.
I mean, we could put two short-term, that just would require maybe striping and some small signage, like handicap signage that you would have. You could pull in, unload the car to that crosshatched area and then move your vehicle back out. I don't know if two's enough, you could put more if you thought that was necessary, or an actual lane.
I was just looking at the difference between the 30-degree angle parking between one that had 74 and the other has 73. You lose one space, but what you're doing is creating another drop-off area.
At the end of the aisle there, you still have to cross the people across the lane of traffic to get to the entrance. You could stripe a crosswalk without ramp.
So I think the other question, I don't have the answer, is like, obviously through typical summer weekdays, this is not going to be an issue because the parking lot's really not jam-packed until towards like Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday if it's really sunny out. So we're really talking about those optimum days, July and August, where people are going for the weekend to try to get to the beach. I guess my preference is the one that you have with the drop-off, both locations, because if you've got a lot of people, you know, you've got one area, you could have cars backing up, you could pull over to the other side and, you know.
Do you prefer the one-way?
I think one-way makes sense. And Sean, I only mention it because when I've been down to Nauset Beach, you come on the beach, you're only one-way. And for the, they narrow it to try to maximize, they are angled, but I think it's also, it prevents what you're saying, if it's too wide, somebody's going to go in the opposite direction. And I think it was Tony or was it Karen's point or Sean's, by angling it, it's going to be, you know, with kids running in between the parking spaces, there's always a danger, especially if they're going in different directions. I think when you angle it also, people are backing out of it, I don't know, I guess you could say even if it's perpendicular, they generally are going to have to go slow anyways because they can't see. But I guess you are losing in essence 23 parking spaces, 22 parking spaces if you go with that plan.
We may be able to.
Squeak them one or two more.
Right, yeah, by extending one lane.
Between that one and getting additional drop-off space, my feeling on it is I'd rather the additional space for dropping off than the other one, which you gain 74 spaces as opposed to 73. And, you know, the other thing I was thinking about, and I'll turn over the board because I keep rambling here, I mean, ideally, if it turns in that more and more people are utilizing our beaches and you end up not just having it for pass, monthly or not monthly, but seasonal pass holders, that you end up doing like daily, I mean, then you'd end up having somebody who's going to be there and dictate, you know, they direct people when you go to these other beaches like Nauset or you go down to some of these other beaches. I'm not sure if they do it in Halle, but they'll have people telling you, this is where you parked, you know, to some degree, to some degree, where they're, so.
What's the board feel? Tony?
Um, yeah, I was the one to ask you to do all this angle stuff and I like the original one the best, so I apologize for wasting your time. A lot of it was done before we got to perpendicular. It's just part of doing parking lanes.
There were 14 iterations in the bottom line we came up with, how can we fit the most houses in there?
I mean, that was, that's it. I mean, it's 25%, 20% of the spots go away, and I didn't think it would be anywhere near that. I do like the angle part for what John said in terms of the safety aspect of it, but it really just takes up so many more spots. And that lot has been full and people have parked on, you know, on Hadley and in the neighborhood, so I think I would have to lean towards the original one.
Let's study another time, we'll come back in about two weeks.
Well, can you?
Yeah.
Can you do the, and this is an engineering question, I guess, can you do the original layout and make it one, like make it skinnier, like make them bigger spots, I don't know, so that the one-way flow would work with that? Or is it just two?
Well, then you end up with, you don't have the room to make the turn into the spot because you've narrowed the lane.
Right, oh, okay, okay.
Right now you have the room to back out.
Do you think we'd have any success with just painting? Or is it, you know?
Well, as with anything, you can put as many signs up as you want.
Hence the library.
Although, painting, it does have a lot to do with the feel of driving. You add a center line and a fog line to a road, all of a sudden the road feels smaller, people drive slower. So there is a little bit of mental.
Sean?
I like the idea of angle parking, but not at the expense of losing spaces. So I've been down there on the weekends in the summer and it's full parking lot a few times I've been down there. You can't expect someone to buy a sticker and not have a place to park. So like Tony said, whatever maximizes the parking lot, the most amount of cars, that's what I'd like to do.
And we went through the original in one of the angles with Laura Glancy and members of the Beach Association too, to get their input. Where do you want to see the lifeguards park? Where are you going to store your porta-potties? Where can, and what's available for alternative spaces out there? They're talking about a shade structure over a bench so that you can sit and get picked up at the drop-off now that we've created that, so that's, things are coming together with a lot of comment from different people.
Any questions from the audience?
Well, I'm fine with one with 95. Any else feels that way?
But without the, without the 10-spot drop-off, right?
You want to add two, the two or three five-minute parking drop-off, right there at the, they've kind of got two on top of each other, I have the lane.
I think the two is fine then if that's what they have, two more drop-off.
To take two spots away at the entrance to drop-off?
Yes.
I think it's great.
Yeah, absolutely. With dragons and stuff, yeah.
Like you were saying, unload the car and then you get to go.
That's the other reason why you want to unload the car, so you can get your spot. That's the other reason for.
All right, motion?
Or do you need one? Or just want us to?
We awarded the contract last week.
So you don't need one then?
Just to discuss this kind of.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure, great.
Thank you for doing, taking the time to do it, we appreciate it.
Good job, Tony.
Part of the project.
All right, so let's move on to the next one, street acceptance for Blanchard Farm. Working our way back up.
I think most of these people are here for the DPW event policy, so you want to skip to that.
So, when did this committee meet? Who's on it? And when did they vote on it? That's what I'd like to know first and foremost.
Which committees? Because it's gone through.
The acceptance committee, I see it was a vote two to zero.
Yes, you won that?
How come I wasn't invited? That's what I want to find out.
Twice.
I know, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
No, I did.
When did you invite me?
Twice, for this.
Did you send it?
We had it, I mean, it was short notice only because of timeframe. And then who's for, so it was me and Bill Limbacher.
Yeah, Planning Board would be here.
Advisory.
I don't know.
And Mark Sandem.
Okay.
Gave his notice in the fall. So they sent, Anthony was there from advisory, but he wasn't.
Voting member?
A voting member.
Okay.
So he came from advisory. There was a petition put together and we were waiting for the MYLR to hold the meeting and then it became a time crunch. We had our notice posted as required and Planning Board posted it as well for their next upcoming meeting, so they got it posted in time and held theirs. It needed to be voted on tonight by the board to go on to the warrant. And I notified the abutters, not only within the subdivision, but anybody abutting the property last week, so I needed seven days to do that. I think I'm at nine.
Okay, so all the requirements for notice have been met? It's been voted?
Correct, Planning Board supported, street acceptance supported. The town clerk has had it for her seven days prior to town meeting.
Okay.
She got it last week.
Fair enough. I would have gone to the meeting. I, it went to the wrong email address.
Okay, I hit two before you two.
Because I asked the last meeting and I've asked why the chair wasn't, but it's done, let's get it done and let's.
Apologize.
Don't worry, I just feel bad because that's the responsibility of the chair and it's, we meet once every five years, it seems to accept the street, and I would have been on it.
I didn't have a committee when it first came in. I was scrambling for.
That's good that we've got it, so that's, we've got it. So it's been through, questions from the board?
It's up to town standards, right, Kevin?
Yeah.
They asked for three construction waivers during the subdivision process. So the curb was reduced from granite throughout to granite at the entrance, Cape Cod, typical waiver. The roadway width from 24 to 22, they requested 20. Planning Board denied that, 22, which has been accepted in the past as a minimum width. And they had a shallow drain at the entrance where they requested cast iron or ductile iron pipe to be used for drain due to the shallow cover. It couldn't meet the depth requirements at concrete, another common engineering practice. So the waivers that were granted do not impact the.
Did you mention, you mentioned the, I'm not sure, is there, is there a sidewalk on Curtis, Curtis Street?
Across the street?
There is.
There is.
And is there at least a sidewalk or some way of walking, because within the cul-de-sac coming up on one side?
There is.
There is. So no, it's not the full, but it's a portion that kids can get from.
I think the contractor at that time in lieu of sidewalk on both sides, had installed those two radar signs.
What are they?
The two radar signs.
Oh, on Country Way.
On Country Way.
Yes, okay.
Speed signs.
Speed signs, in lieu of that.
But there is at least a access, that's all, okay.
Questions from the board?
I'm only concerned because in the cul-de-sac, just make sure there's at least one side to have access for kids to be able to ride on their bikes, take it up to the street and then get to the library or the fields.
Not that this makes too much difference, but what about the kids trying to get onto Curtis and is there a crosswalk?
There isn't a crosswalk then.
Could we paint one in later? The residents feel they need one, I mean, that looks like young, sounds like young families.
We'd have to create a new ramp.
There need to be handicap ramps on each side to make that.
Okay.
You couldn't just paint it.
All right.
Well, we should do it anyways. I mean, if somebody has a child or a parent or elderly in accessibility, we should make sure that they're able to get across the road in any event, because I know it's a cost factor, but that should happen.
That's something we will look at, it might, it might have even been one of the builders' requirements that there was a handicap ramp, but that's something, do stop them up three sections, so someone will search.
Is that something, Ian, chairman of the Planning Board, is that something that maybe the Planning Board could try to insert that any type of sidewalk, whether it's a complete sidewalk, or at least that they make it accessible for disabilities? And I only say that because it wasn't until I injured my knee last year, I realized it's really hard to get around town when you can't, so something we should think about.
All right, well then, in that case, any other questions?
Do you think we should make them put that in? Is that what you're suggesting? And when you say two, you mean just one on each side of the street, right?
Right.
What's that cost?
About $2,500 each side.
Sean, we should be in that business.
Tony, you got to. We're busy, Tony, we've got a lot going on now.
So Kevin, is that something?
No, let's get this accepted. But next time you work on Curtis, let's, let's see, the possibility of doing that. But to your point, I mean, there's a lot, there's more to it than just putting a crosswalk in.
So I would not at this point try to thwart, prevent this from happening because you're at the 11th hour. But I have to say, that has got to be accessible. When we're building new streets, we've got to make sure that if there's going to be anybody using it, we've got to have handicap accessible. We went through this when we built the trail on Tilden. We went through this when we dealt with First Parish at Jenkins. It's, you know, we did it on Hadley, which is nice. You got to, you got to do it, we got to do it, we got to come up with it somehow, and I hate saying it.
It's just going to be a requirement.
Well, I, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, but I think, isn't it part of the tenure plan is doing, the tenure master plan, they're going to look at accessibility throughout town? I don't think it extends to every single crosswalk, but we're doing that as part of the master plan, seeing where we really should be focusing on improving accessibility.
We're actually, as a part of our town meeting, having a, it's one of the capital items for a review of accessibility.
That's right, that's what I remember, that's part of the master plan.
But I'm only saying it for any streets going forward, except that we got to do that.
We usually make it a priority and I, as I said, we'd have to look back in the notes, like, you know, it's one of the things we typically require, you know, handicap ramp on each side, or at least as a minimum, one for the one that they installed, and then we could always go one on the other side and over stripe this. But it is something we won't do, we won't just stripe a crosswalk unless the handicap accessible section is set up there.
So is that something planning should really have on their checklist, probably?
I'm sure they do.
I think they probably do, it's just a question of whether the developer, contractor's looking for a waiver. It's just one of those things where I think we as a town collectively need to be a little more proactive in ensuring that when these things are done, accessibility is a part of it. I think I'd rather see the town become more accessible and become kind of the leaders in accessibility on the South Shore than just follow it up.
And I think this goes back to Laura Hawbottle's time, this was one of her projects, so it's been a while, it's been a long time.
No surprise there. But anyway, like I said, I don't want to thwart this because frankly, you're at that 11th hour, next week's our town meeting, but if we can put that on a priority or something, Kevin, Sean, that would be really good.
Offsite connectivity, really, is where you need to look past the project.
Yeah.
All right, well then, motion?
Please.
To put the article to place the acceptance of Blanchard Farm Lane on the town any warrant.
Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. Harris. Discussion, is any question?
Yeah, I have a question. We have a.
First, I need your name and your address.
Sorry, Brian Christophero of Seven Blanchard Farm.
Brian, what's that?
Christophero.
Christophero, yes.
Seven Blanchard Farm Lane.
Yep.
There's a water retention basin at the end of the street that we have an agreement in place to maintain it and I'll keep it going forward. With the street acceptance, does that move over to the town as well or that stays with?
That stays with the homeowners association.
Okay. Okay.
Yep. There should be like a street competition of who has the best Marigold Street.
Move to change the name of Blanchard.
Any other questions?
Question.
Yes.
Fringe Legal, Wesley Lane. I was wondering when our crosswalk's going to be at the library right down the street? Been waiting for that for about two years.
The crosswalk's scheduled to be done this spring. They won't do the path. So, there's no handicap accessible pathway from the library to the street. Once that gets done, I think that's when the crosswalk goes in. That's going to be done.
There hasn't been a crosswalk for two years.
Right. And that falls back on me. I wouldn't put a crosswalk in there unless it was a handicap accessible path because I didn't want somebody going down in a wheelchair or something, sliding across the space. It didn't meet the waiver requirements.
So, it's just got to wait a little bit longer. It'll be there. Rome wasn't built in a day, as you very well know. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Great. Now, folks, congrats. Make sure you get to town meeting.
Thanks so much.
You're not staying for DPW events?
Now, if we can get to the DPW events, walk our way back here.
Is everybody coming in, or do I have to wait?
They're in the hallway waiting.
So, couple issues. Everybody has always heard about DPW, and, you know, we don't wire these horses here. I think everybody on the board's called me at least once to tell me that there's been a horse in some neighborhood that we didn't know about. DPW handles a lot of races, public events, miscellaneous stuff where we give out horses, manpower, and everything else in order to support those events, which we gladly do. And I tried to set up a policy that we could put in writing and include with the applications. So, if people want to use horses, you know, we have horses lined up. We can also help out with trash removal. We had people talking about the dog race just last week. How are they going to remove the trash? And we don't have a means really to set it up, and that got me to thinking about putting this detailed policy together, just like the police have, where if people need trash barrels, we can supply trash barrels, and that'll include pickup, delivery, and disposal of the trash. We also let out a lot of wooden horses, typically on hand. We have 50 wooden horses that we can let people use for these events, and we do set them up. We also have a rate for our laborers and a laborer with a safety truck in case that's needed to help out with the event, and it's just a means of setting this up. We also changed it around so that the people running the event would be in charge of getting the horses back. We don't get the horses back, and they're scattered through neighborhoods, and we don't find them till winter. And everybody complains, why don't they pick up their horses? So, that's where we are, and we're hoping this type of policy would be an advantage to the town. I don't know of any other towns that have policies similar to this, but I thought it'd be a good idea.
Comments from the board? Aaron?
Kevin, I think having you think this through is very useful because the town does expend a lot of resources to support these. My first reaction when I looked at this was, I was a little concerned because, you know, you can look at all of the events we have in this town, and they create value to our community, and you, and my first reaction was, do we want to do anything to discourage those? And I don't. But I also don't think that it's the town's responsibility to share in the costs of a fundraiser for an event when it really does cost us money in labor and sawhorses and trash removal and all of those things that the department does so well. So, I think it's a great idea that you have gone through this. I think it is, you know, consistent with what we do with police details and those sorts of things. And I did note that, you know, later tonight, we're going to be looking at one-day Walton liquor licenses, and if somebody wants to use the Maritime Center, there's a rental fee for that. So, I sort of look at this as a rental fee to use town services as well. So, I think it's a great idea.
Sean? So, this is a great benchmark. We can always adjust it accordingly going forward. It's great. Yeah, I think it's a good idea. The only question I had is, on some of these events, you put the costs next to it, you know, at the bottom of that spreadsheet that you had?
Yep.
Like Cohasset Triathlon, $100. I couldn't figure out how you, do they?
It's a special event fee.
Oh, that's the fee.
That's just a special event fee.
Okay. So, that's the fee for the event that has nothing to do with the charges.
Correct. But we still spend time, you know, if the police called us up and said they need 20 horses here, 10 horses here, our guys are still going out setting these things up. So, instead of us doing, say, potholes, our guys are running around setting up horses and getting set for the event.
Right.
Which we're trying to avoid. The three-hour minimum for the hourly time is just the union regulations for our guys. If we call them, it's a three-hour minimum.
Right.
So, I guess the concern I face, we have the police, we have the fire, we have the DPW. I saw the three-hour minimum. I knew it was right due to the contract. But that's also in the police and fire. And one of the things I'm concerned about is that the town will charge, and this is not just to DPW. Town will charge for these things for various events that frankly could actually prevent the events from actually functioning due to the fact that many of them don't profit. They actually break even or try to break even. And there's a danger that by doing this and charging it, we're not going to be able to have some of these nice events because people are going to say, I can't afford it. Take example, okay, sawhorse is down for Halloween. Who's going to pay for it? Expectation, is it going to be merchants, going to be chamberers, going to be somebody who? And if not, you know, a lot of them are going to say, well, we're buying the candy. You're shutting it off. We've got to pay for the police and the fire to come down and sawhorses. At the end of the day, I'm going to say, it's not worth it. In an event like that, that a lot of people like, I'm going to say, what happened to it? It's gone. Same thing could be said with Santa Stroll, you know, and, you know, the parades, you know. And so, the concern I have is that there comes a point, I just don't know the answer, but there comes a point where the town has to work in partnership with some of these events that make our town unique. And I don't know, like I said, what would that entail? Obviously, it comes out of the budget. And, you know, so I think at some point, depending on how these numbers shake out in the future, the town's going to have to take a look at that and say, we kind of partner in this. How do we do it? The cost to go down, to hire the guys to put up the sawhorse, or to have the detail down there. And that's a hard, you know, it's a hard question to ask because which events are going to be more town-related and higher priority than others? But I see the danger in that going forward at some point. I commend you because bottom line is, the police doing it, the fire are doing it. So, you should do it. As far as the sawhorses, I think that's important. This is before you, but it used to be, they would drop the sawhorses and they'd remain until we had the bonfires, and then they all got burnt, and then they'd build new ones. And, because they never picked them up. Or, well, they, it's not fair. As far as the B just never went, ordered them to go pick them up. But that's not happening anymore. So, those are my thoughts. Thank you for what it's worth.
Yeah, I like the structure.
We'd still have options if people wanted to come and pick them up, if they were volunteers with pickup trucks. They could go pick up the horses. Saying this, we will always have 50 horses set aside for an event.
Good.
One of the problems we had is, you know, you have different events. There were multiple races going on one particular weekend, and I went in on a Friday, wondering where everybody was, and I get 12 guys working on making horses because they have to get ready for three different races to get all the horses we have out there. And, you know, I'd rather have the guys pick some potholes or doing something more productive.
And the other thought I had, which when you mentioned it, was like the laborers with safety truck, you know, the American Legion, these guys are going down there, getting up on ladders, putting up flags up in North Situate, down in Green Bush, down in Front Street. There comes a part where I'm like, you can't charge them because they don't have the money to pay for it, for the boom truck and to be able to do it. That's where I'm saying that we need to kind of partner and say, these things probably have to be put together. It'd be nice, but.
And typically with the boom truck, we're not outcharging, you know, we're doing it during regular time.
You guys have been very good about it.
We have a guy out there, we put the flags up whenever they have to come up and down and everything else.
But do you see what I'm saying? By having a policy, somebody in the future who comes in, it's new DPW director, where that's the policy, that's what you're going to do, and then you can see people saying, well, I can't do it, can't afford it, and so, don't do it. That's all.
Yeah. I mean, the only thing I'd add, you're 100% right, but people can come before us and ask for an abatement on it. But it's man-hours, you know? If someone's running a fundraiser for a road race, they can't expect five DPW people to go out and lay miles of track and pick up extra trash cans because of their event.
Correct.
You know, that's part of the cost of running the event. But there are things that the town wants to be involved in, and we do support it, and those would be ones that I think we would look and maybe abate the fee, like the administrative stuff that we.
And these funds go back to the general fund. It's not coming to DPW. We're not doing this to try to generate revenue. It's just so that we can put a handle on this and try to control some of these events because they are, they're getting almost out of hand. We're having trouble keeping up with them sometimes.
All right. Do you want a motion? I think you do.
Generally, you guys have a policy that you want to consider later, that when policies come before the board, they're heard on one night and they're voted on the second night.
Perfect.
So, you can vote on it tight because you haven't adopted the other policy, but I figured I'd throw it out there before you violate the new policy.
We'll start the precedent by waiting until the next meeting, which will be the 23rd, and by then, we'll have a full board so that everybody can vote on. How about that? Do you have an event between now and the 23rd?
Probably a couple races in there somewhere.
But they're already approved, so.
I haven't raced, so.
Oh, in that case, double it, right? Tell them the police did it, you know? All right. Kevin, Sean, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move on now to a 7:50 discussion vote coming. Vicular license for Tara's Kitchen and Tara Hollander. Hi there.
Yes, she is.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So, you're looking for a Vicular's license?
Yes.
Why don't you give a pitch so everybody can hear it TV and tell exactly what you know?
Get the microphone so they can hear you.
Yep.
So, I would like to be able to have some seating in this location down in North Situate.
776 Country Way.
Yes. Exactly. We're going to do breakfast. I like breakfast. Want to hit the commuters. Mom's dad's going to the park across the street.
Which building are we talking about? So, people get a point of reference.
Right in the Stillwater is now.
Yep.
Fresh Feast used to be there.
Yep.
And she had left a while ago, so we're just going to slide into that spot. We're going to do breakfast, lunch, and prepare dinners to go. We currently have two other locations. Braintree, we've got a cafe over there, and then also a Norwell Center, and we do breakfast, lunch, and prepare dinners to go as well. Like to be open seven days a week. I'm not sure exactly the time we're going to close, but I'm thinking right now about 3:00-ish. And if it feels like we need to stay open later, then of course we will. And I'd like to be open at 5:00, 6:00 in the morning.
Great. Really good. I'm looking at Jim.
It is really good.
I'm here today, and I had about 15 customers in here.
Yeah. I've been to the Norwell, and it's a great facility, so this is very exciting for North Situate.
Own cooked meals. Where grandmothers cook, so nothing really fancy.
That's it. I haven't.
We're also happy right now.
We're also hungry.
I said, we're actually, she brought some, you know, samples for the group.
We'll postpone it.
When would you be looking to?
As soon as possible. I actually have my Board of Health permits.
Oh, you're all.
So, this is kind of.
Is the one on the side?
Right.
It used to be Donahue's. Oh, Donahue's.
Bank. It's on the news.
Yeah. Bill Bank, right? Yeah.
Bill Bank.
Well, absolutely. They have an addition. They have a food addition in North Situate. It's great, and you're going to get a leg up because people in the north want something to be able to go there. That's, are you having seating too? Is it?
I would like to have some seating, yes.
Good.
How much?
How many seats are you looking at?
Whatever the limits will allow me. I know it goes, has to do with parking and septic, gives first footage, so I guess we can, I can kind of talk to somebody else about that later and find out exactly what we can put in there for seating. I would also like to be able to take some of those seats in the summertime and move them outside onto that brick patio.
Nice. That'd be great.
How big is the space?
Well, it's combined, so I'm sharing it with Stillwater. I'm exactly sure the square footage, if I had to guess, probably about 1,200.
So, what are you thinking, like four or five tables? Is that what you're thinking?
Yes. Yeah. I know that there's three downstairs windows, and I absolutely wanted to get the seats in the windows for sure. So.
Great. Great. Motion?
Approval for the common vic license for Tara's Kitchen located at 776 Country Way, Situate, Mass, pending Board of Health approval.
Motion by Ms. Canfield, seconded by.
Second.
Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Good luck.
Welcome to North Situate.
Thank you.
Okay. Going to move on to a 7:55 discussion vote, outdoor entertainment permit, Kennedy's Country Country Gardens, Chris Kennedy. Chris, good evening, you're back again.
I am back.
Great. So, I've talked to Chris, and I just want to make sure, I know that Chris is...
Well, I'm going to butter here, as I've said in the past, and I'm going to kind of sit aside for this and let you guys.
Thank you. So, I know that you've received an email from Bob Vogel about the proposal, and I've talked to you, Chris, about it, and at this point, you're looking for three events for entertainment, right? Is that what the license?
Yep, three weddings.
So, there are three weddings, and this, the reason why you're before us is for an entertainment license, right?
Correct. There's one in June.
And what's the date for June, July?
One in August.
June 29th, July 13th, August 17th.
Okay, and those are the only three that you're going to be holding, correct?
That is right.
Okay. Now, one of the things that Bob Vogel was seeking, and this is what I was expecting, but I'm willing to support it, on condition that you would obviously no longer publicize on your website that you're doing event planning, correct? And that you would notify him of that, okay? That you would say that these are the only three events that you're doing, and that you've taken down the information off the website, and that you're not doing any more event planning for that site, correct?
Correct. I mean, I know that I need to come here for entertainment license. I've agreed to not have any events with entertainment until I go through the zoning process.
Okay.
Is that right?
Well, you can't do any events, is what we're looking at, okay, until you go through...
So, does that include a garden club event, or any events that I've traditionally done for the life of my business? Because I didn't know you...
Well, garden club is different, and this is what it would be, like if you're having, in this case, it's weddings, so that's an event that's not associated with the gardening aspect, or the horticulture aspect.
Okay.
So, that would be, you know, basically, my understanding is that the building inspector said that these three events be permitted, and that the, duh-duh-duh-duh, each with one day event permit, which is what we're proposing to give you, because three people are having their weddings there. And it's going to be a tough time to say no, given the fact that they won't be able to probably have their wedding at this point, if we don't say yes.
Correct.
And then he was suggesting that, could you employ, ceasing employing advertising your facility for further event use until such time as you prepared your, I guess, until you decide to go to zoning.
Okay.
That's it, that's it. So, that's my understanding from the building commissioner, and that was his email to you from March 14th, 2019. And that's what I think that we need to be able to say, that we'll grant you the use for it, for these events. Until you go to zoning, you can't do anything else.
This is the first I've heard of this email, so that's new information to me. I agree that the weddings are, I'm not going to be the one that tells a bride that she's not going to have a venue, so these are definitely short-term. I'd like to have a copy of that to look at myself.
Sure.
But thank you for going to see the building inspector, to have the process started, to figure this out correctly.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because you mentioned a garden club event, what other type of event would you have besides of, anything, besides a wedding, or?
My wife's 40th birthday party I've had there. I didn't have any music. I didn't feel like I needed to go to the town.
That's a private, because it's your business.
An employee's graduation party I hosted there. We've been holding a winter open house since, before I was involved with the business. We had one this past week, and I don't know, we've been doing it forever. So, these, some of these things have been happening for a long time, and it, you know, I guess what changes is when I use the word wedding. It seemed to be what happened.
Well, the only time you've ever had to come before us, before us, is for outdoor entertainment, I believe.
Right, so events that have entertainment, and I thought that's what your jurisdiction was, and I thought that's what we were talking about.
Right, that's why both Sean and I are like, we wanted to see what this said.
John, you've read it. And more lengthy, do you feel that, not putting words in Boswell, he meant by saying "event" away?
I couldn't tell you, and that's what I'm saying. I think, you know, we're in a position where our jurisdiction is the license on the entertainment. From what Bob Vogel, and Bob's not here, as you know, he's gone, you're going to be running anything that's not related to horticulture, then you got to see, you got to go, because what's going to happen is very simple. He's going to get a call. Somebody's going to call him, and they're going to say, "This is not Germaine."
Understand.
And it's going to shut down. And then that's it. So, I'm just saying, it's...
I understand.
So, my understanding from reading from this, I haven't talked to Bob directly, but I have his email that he was sent to you. It was CC to Lorraine Devon, Jim, and Michelle Segaze, and that's why I have a copy of it, is that that's what his recommendation, with that, you know, we'd allow these three events, but he believes this approval should be contingent on you ceasing to employ or advertise your facility for further event use until such time as you have prepared your arguments justifying this use, gone before the ZBA, and received the board's decision. So, he doesn't say entertainment use, he says event.
Okay.
I guess that's, Chris, what I'm thinking of.
Has to be related to his business.
Right.
So, the horticultural event?
Fine.
Related to the business.
Open house for winter, fine.
Related to the business, yeah.
It's related to the business. It's, the question is if you are holding?
Okay.
Something beyond, that's all. Yes.
Then just a question on the motion, Chris. I don't know if this was actually in part of it, when you were here before us. 10:00 PM, is that what you've told people?
Yes.
Okay.
That is what we've talked about previous. I don't know if it actually was mentioned in the last meeting, but that's, 10 o'clock is what we've always said is the latest, we would go with anything.
Okay.
So, Chris, can I ask one question? What type of entertainment are you looking for, when you say small band?
So, the first event in June, at the end of June, they described it to me as background music. The other two have bands. I've spoken to both bands and asked what we can do to keep the noise levels down, to be respectful to our neighbors, and these are both things that I made comments to, to the last, at the last meeting. And they, both bands have agreed to be able to keep the music down, and be respectful.
All right, Jim, anything else?
No.
So, in that case, then, can I get a motion?
Move to grant an outdoor entertainment permit for Chris Kennedy, County Gardens, located at 85 Chief Justice Cushing Highway, for private parties with live music slash small band on June 29th, 2019, July 13th, 2019, and August 17th, 2019, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Harris, seconded by Ms. Canfield. I'd like to at least have contingent on, as recommended here, that contingent that he ceased employing or advertising the facility for further event until such time as he's prepared any arguments to the zoning board.
I don't have a problem with that, but I think you heard it loud and clear, it's, you know, how do you feel, Karen?
Well, I think we should, I mean, obviously, there's going to be a partnership as we work through this to make sure that, you know, your business isn't impeded, but it follows the rules, and we're all agreeing that we're going to do that, so, you know. Do you have an objection as to adding it to it?
I don't.
Okay, so amended.
So, motion made by Mr. Harris, seconded by Ms. Canfield as amended. Discussion? Question from the audience?
2998 Chief Justice Cushing, is any of the music going to be amplified at these weddings? I think in a prior meeting, there wasn't going to be amplified.
They requested it. I came to you to ask what I could do and what I couldn't do. And they have said that they have various ways to keep the music down.
So, yes amplified.
And I can't speak for all the entertainment, but I do know that the first wedding is going to be lower, lower levels. I don't think they said acoustic, or anything like that. But I would think they would be plugged in, but kept at reasonable levels, based on what I, what I was able to derive from the two bands that I spoke with, that are going to be more traditional wedding band type of things. And it's for, basically, two nights for like, two or three hours. And there's no more, doesn't appear to be any more houses around me than there is at some of the other venues in town, even though I know this isn't a traditional thing. I'm just looking at, like, it's two, so.
So, there are two events with potentially?
The bands, yes.
The other one is not?
Doesn't have a band.
All right, any other discussion? Any other questions? Jim, did you have something? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Chris.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations to the Vannover.
All right, let's move on to the next, which happens to be a discussion vote on Toll Brothers' agreement with Attorney Jeffrey DeLeese. Jeff, good evening.
Hi, good evening. So, as a condition of the special permit from the planning board, the Toll Brothers had entered into an agreement with the town, a mitigation agreement, and Toll is very happy to accommodate the board's request to amend that agreement in the manner which has been presented to the board.
Well, let's back that up for a second, because this, the board hasn't made any decision on it, discussion. I actually had asked Jim Boudreaux about whether or not Toll would consider taking the funds that it was looking to use to build a field, soccer field, or a field?
Small soccer.
It was a small soccer field, undersized.
Ball field, yeah.
Field, abutting the property to the seaside resorts, is that what it's called now?
Seaside at Situate.
Seaside in Situate. And the reason for it is because if it's being built there, and I know the fields are desperately needed in Wampatuck, we also have needs with respect to what's going to happen, presumably after Monday, presuming it's successful with our recreational fields from the CPC. And one aspect is, what are we going to do with the JV baseball field? And then what are we going to do with potentially a little league field? And so, the thought was, I asked Jim to reach out to see if there's a possibility that Toll might be willing to change, if you will, those funds, and allow us to determine where we could utilize them a little better, given the fact that it might be beneficial at this juncture, given what we're doing. So, that's when I asked Jim to reach out to your firm to do so, and I appreciate that, Jeff.
Yeah.
Because I realized that Toll is amenable for giving the town $400,000 directly, so that we can then dictate what to do with those funds. Is that correct, Jim?
Yeah.
And so, that's why I asked to come today, so that the board could then take a look at that, and see what the board would like to do, if they're interested in doing that, and so, that's why they're here before us.
Good explanation, thanks, Sean.
What are your thoughts? Anybody?
I was part of all this talk from the beginning, I think it's a great idea, maybe they'd be useful in a different field, and who knows with the school stuff going on, and what that link may be needed for in the future, so it's going to go towards ballfields at some, on some part in town, and it'll be at our discretion to do it, so, I don't have a problem with it.
Karen or Sean?
No, that's...
No, I think it actually, the flexibility is an improvement to the original, given, you know, where we are now, a year later, so it was a good initiative, and I think it'd be great. How do they feel about marigolds? Oh, you weren't here for that conversation.
No.
It's even better.
Discussion from the audience, any questions? All right, then. Enter the motion?
Move that the board vote to amend Section 1, Page 2 of the agreement between Toll Mass., Three Limited Partnership in the Town of Situate, dated July 24th, 2018, hereafter the agreement whereby Toll Brothers will pay the town the sum of $400,000 for the ballfield, for ballfield purposes of constructing, installing a ballfield or fields, on or before August 31st, 2019, this is very odd, for the purposes of the town constructing, installing, repairing, renovating, or reconstructing ballfields hereafter the ballfield project, in lieu of the Toll Brothers performing any of the work and construction of the ballfields, and performing other related work behind the Wampatuck School.
Second. Motion by Ms. Canfield, seconded by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Jeff, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And just so you know, there's a town initiative to put marigolds everywhere, so.
Yeah, I have to think about that.
You'll be hearing about it.
All right, moving on to a discussion vote, Archives Disaster Recovery Plan, Betty Foster, archivist, and Jody McDonough, archivist volunteer. Ladies, good evening. That's okay, that's all right, take your time.
Which does not work well with the, but that's another issue.
Very long and very difficult.
I'll give you a little background information in what this is about. Last fall, the Board of Library Commissioners ran a disaster program for municipalities, museums, schools, colleges, down in Lakeville, and I went, Jody went, Chief Murphy went, Elena Chevry from the Fire Department went, and Bob Chesia and Mary Porter from the Historical Society. And that was in the fall, and shortly thereafter, it doesn't matter, we had a pipe break in the archives, and a real disaster was averted, because Tommy Grimes was on top of it, the custodian, you can see Holt was involved, and Kathy Gardner was out of town on, at a town clerk's meeting, and the two girls in the town clerk's office stepped right up and prevented a real disaster. The pipe had broken previously, two years ago, and had been patched, and it's patched again. It was in the old vault where, that is locked and sealed after an election. So, that made us think that we better spend a little more time preparing for a disaster, because it's not if we have one, it's when we have another one. It's an old building, the pipes are old. This is the fourth thing that I've been involved in since I've been the archivist. So, Jody is a master with the computer, and she put together this fine book and all the graphics, and we know all the charts, and everybody's telephone number, and who to call, and their cell phone numbers, if they're not in the office, and it's a very comprehensive, I think, document. It is particularly, excuse me, particularly for the archives, it is not for all of Town Hall, but it will help us if that, when that situation happens again. I have reached out to the Balafor Company, who does big-time disaster recovery, so that they are aware that we have an archives with very, very, very valuable books and papers, one of the finest in Hunth County, which very few people are aware of, they're listed back to the 1600s, and we've done the best to protect them. We put the oldest ones in fire safes that are good to 350 degrees, so that they are protected. But there's four rooms of records, and without CPC money, I wouldn't have been able to do all that. That's what this is, this is mainly a document, so that everybody involved, the fire, the police, the facilities management, the town administrator, knows what to expect and how it's going to work. Jody, do you have anything to add?
Probably the Town Hall should have one as well.
So, with the, with the policy then in place, this is for people to understand what happens when there is a crisis down in the, into the, into those documents, then?
It would, a lot of it would spill over to anything at Town Hall, because the telephone numbers are the same, and the people responding. With only hangup is we are trying to get duplicate keys for the fire safes to put in the lockbox out front, and that's not going easily, but we'll probably take care of that tomorrow.
With the pipe that broke, was this a heating pipe, or is it a pipe that's used for somewhere else in the building?
Yeah, no, it was either a water sewer pipe up in the ceiling, and every room down there has pipes in the ceiling. So, when I say, when it happens again, it certainly will.
Was the corner, the, where the, I think the oldest section of the archives, was that originally designed for that purpose, for preservation of our documents, or was this an afterthought, that we decided we're going to start putting them there?
Evidence sometime ago, but I think it was originally a bomb shelter, that whole area down there is. So, we didn't spend a lot of time on bombs and nuclear disasters.
Right.
We geared it more to the pipes.
Right. Sean?
No, that's, that's great, another document in place that spells everything out.
That's great. Karen?
The work you guys put into it is extraordinary, and the detail, it really is something, and anybody could pick up, and as long as we can get everyone trained to understand what the steps are, you've laid out everything that there is, so.
Thank Jody.
I know, she's very good at these things, and we're really, we're really lucky to have the expertise, both of you.
Absolutely.
Yeah. No, I would love, to Jody's point, there's, there is a lot of expandable knowledge in what you've already started, so thank you for that, but it's excellent, excellent work.
A labor of love.
I read it, it's very comprehensive, it's very long. My only suggestion would be, in the heat of a moment, there should be some sort of summary, you know, document at the point that tells people exactly what to do right then, because nobody's going to read this 30-page document and try and figure out what to do. But there should be immediate steps of 1, 2, 3, 4, laminated at the, at the point, so here's who you call, you know, lock the door, whatever you're supposed to do. But I think that, that would just be helpful, because this is, you know, a lot of this is procedural, a lot, a lot of the documents, it's, you know, do this, do this, do this, but it's not, hey, turn this key, because that shuts, or lock the safe, or whatever, whatever the real tangible things that need to actually save the documents, as opposed to, you know, the policy involved in it, I think would be very helpful, so, because you never know who's going to be there. You know, it could just be, you know, a part-time janitor on a Saturday, where they really wanted us to know the three or four steps of, call 911, shut the door, shut off the water, or something.
Sean? You go ahead.
Jim, in the future, not right away, but is there a place in the Old Gates School that might be better suited for all these documents?
Probably not, just because there's nobody there.
All right.
So, there's someone in this building all day, during the week, most of the time at night, so if something happens, we would know sooner rather than later, where if something happened in the Old Gates with nobody in there? in the Old Gates with nobody in there?
That's true.
Unless you had some real controls on it, you wouldn't know if a pipe burst or something for, for a while.
But in the, in the future, maybe.
Yeah, I mean, if we were going to do something with the Old Gates in the future, let's say we're going to move Town Hall in there, then you would probably plan a room or rooms specifically for the archives. So you'd make sure that there weren't any pipes going through there, the climate control sealed, all that would be controlled. That'd be the perfect thing to do.
What would be a perfect square footage you'd, you'd need?
Well, we have now three, three rooms full of records.
If you, Betty, if you were to say, three rooms, not this size?
Bigger.
Three, three times, really?
Two this size, and then what's, they call the old sign room, where Sexton used to make the town sign.
Some of it's office space.
Okay, right. All right.
So my, my question was, yeah, I was thinking the same thing you're thinking. But is there a Town Hall or a town that actually has built an area specifically dedicated for, you know, the archives? I've seen like Town of Plymouth, you know, now they've just built their new, they went into the old Supreme Court. And have they created an area, or do they keep it at the old building? Or is there any town that says, geez, we're not thinking as an afterthought, here's your space. They're saying, we generated, we created, we built an actual archive area that's going to be safe for fire and from other disasters potential, or potential disasters?
Most of them, as far as I know, are relegated to either the attic or the
Basement.
Basement. And usually the basement. And I just saw the first plan for the Old Gate School. And once again, the proposed archive was in the basement, which, if it doesn't leak, which is not the case because it does leak downstairs, we get a lot of groundwater because it's, we're bottom of the building.
Some archives and libraries, I think they don't, like, some of them might have one.
Interesting. Curious.
We, the records management is governed by the Secretary of State. So he tells us, they put out a retention schedule every few years, what we can get rid of, what we have to keep. And unfortunately, a great many of the records are for permanent retention. And the guidelines of not to put them on disk and digitize them, it is to put them on microfilm. And I have done a lot of that. This is all with CPC money.
Wow.
And when you microfilm them, the company that does it retains a copy as well. So that if you lose the records and you lose the microfilm, they have a copy.
It's your backup.
Yes. But think about a nice place that's climate-controlled.
I was thinking, like, Sean, and I was thinking, well, gee, the old high school would be an interesting location with a nice area for being able to pull documents out or sit down to go over them, and you can bring them back into the controlled area, which would be nice. Be very nice.
Well, the, the records management system that we put in, oh, maybe five years ago, is completely transferable to another building. All the shelving, all the numbering, all the retrieval would just be...
Pick up and move.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Tom?
No.
Great. So, motion? No, actually, we're going through our policy. We have to wait for another meeting, Jim?
That's the policy that you're supposed to adopt after this.
Great. Tell you what we'll do. How about if we do, we're going to do it at our next meeting, because then I'll have more here. And then, and then move to approve it. We'll just put it on the agenda and just approve it at that time. Is that okay?
And we'll have the laminated chart form ready.
You won't need to come back.
You don't need to come back. That's what I'm saying.
And Jody cut the book down from about how many pages? 300 or something?
Good job.
Jody, thank you. Betty, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, let's see. Next one is a discussion vote, Water Resource Commission Proposal on Water Connection Multi-Unit Buildings.
The trip.
Becky, how are you?
We're supposed to bring him back.
And...
I know.
Running a little bit behind, but we're catching up here. All right. Is there anybody else from your committee want to come on up?
Yes, we can.
Lots of folks.
Bring them up.
You want to? Come on up.
(laughing)
Can you do me a favor then? Introduce yourself and then introduce them to...
Sure.
We'll, we'll get one second here.
So I'm Becky Mallman. I'm the Chair of the Water Resources Committee. This is Martha Cook.
Hi.
Martha, good evening.
Shirley Young.
Good evening.
And one of our newer members joined my caucus as well in the audience.
Good evening.
Hey.
All right. So you're here, and I'm just going to, so the people understand, you're bringing, I guess, a Water Resource Commission draft for water rules and regulations, water connection fees, with suggested changes for the multi-unit and multifamily dwellings. I have a brief synopsis, so people, so... Go right ahead.
So we're looking to update it to reflect the increase in connection fees that was voted on in the fall, as well as to no longer allow master meters for multifamily dwellings. Don't make a mistake.
Yep, yep. Just so the people, so people here, but also primarily on TV, understand what, what's going on.
Okay. So there are a couple of reasons that we're making this recommendation, one of which is by having an individual or single meter in each unit in a multifamily dwelling, it encourages conservation. People read the, currently, when you have a, a master meter, you're basically, your water and sewer fees are put into your rent. So you never really, you're not really paying for your water use, you're paying for an average of the whole dwelling's water use. So by having an individual meter in each unit, people then can pay for what they're using. They can see how conserving would make an impact on their water bill, et cetera. It also allows the town to identify leaks much better. If you have a master meter and there's a leak somewhere in the system, you're not going to be able to tell where it is. If you have an individual meter, you can identify that leak pretty quickly. And then also, once the new connection fees were approved in the fall, there was a mention at that meeting of, I wonder if, how, how does this $14,000 fee look with master meters? And should we maybe require single meters? So I did some analysis, which is what I provided in your packets.
This is the one with the color chart that you did?
Yes. Yes. So basically, what I did is I looked at three larger developments that are kind of in the hopper but not permitted or final by any stretch of the imagination. We just kind of looked at, this policy would be, would not be retroactive. So don't only look at future development. So I looked at, I think, believe, a single-family, three-bedroom, as well as those three larger developments, just to get a sense of, okay, if we allowed them to have a master meter, what would the annual revenues be accrued from those developments? But if we required a single meter in each unit, what would the annual revenues be? So I looked both at the connection fee as well as water usage. And I think there's a quarterly fee as well. So the numbers are staggering in terms of if the town doesn't continue to allow master meters, the maximum that it'll bring in from these proposed developments is about $300,000. I don't have that.
$369,000, it looks like, $30?
And then if you require a master meter, so one for each unit, $14,000 upfront for each of those units, it's $5,000, $5 million, I believe. So...
5.9 million.
5.9. So if we want the connection fees to make a meaningful difference in our infrastructure, which I believe is the goal, or part of the goal of raising rates and increasing the connection fees, then allowing, continuing to allow the master meters really wouldn't make a very significant dent in the work that needs to be done for the infrastructure.
So let me ask you this, because this is, when I looked at the chart, I was going through it. Three of the five that you had listed, you had Bartlett Fields, Herringbrook, and then Lawson Green. All three are 40B projects?
Right.
And did the, did the Water Resource Committee take a look at the fact that because they're comprehensive permits, that in all probability, they're going to try to circumvent that?
Right.
By saying, we're not going to, it's going to render it uneconomic and, and therefore probably not pay it. That's what I'm anticipating.
Right. So a couple of comments on that. One is, you know, there's a number of, and I don't know if these three, they're a number of developments that have gone from 40B to not 40B, 40B to not 40B over the last few years, depending on kind of the economics. So there's a chance that that could change. There's also, and I included this as well, there's a state law around landlords being able to require tenants, allowing landlords to submeter for tenants. So that could be brought up, that it is, you know, something that is done in other towns. It could be kind of a good faith thing that the developers do in order to provide some funding for the water system that we're going to be putting the strain on. So, but then also, then yes, that is, I mean, I don't know enough about how that process works.
I, I only raise it because I totally see where you're coming from, and I'm not saying anything bad about it. It's just that from my experience from the six years on the zoning board and going through with six 40Bs...
Right.
The whole, the whole push by all but one was not, they weren't friendly. They basically were saying, who cares what you want. In fact, the, the one that I thought was so, so blatant was the location where Toll Brothers is presently. Pulte came in and they said, we're going to put 250 units on the upland portion of Hadley Road. And when we asked them, well, can you put some kind of recreation in? They said, sure. And they put up one bocce ball court. That was how friendly they were about trying to work with us. They basically weren't.
Right.
And they appealed our denial, and they ended up succeeding and getting it overturned by Housing Appeals Committee. And because they said, there's not enough affordable housing in the Town of Situate, so we're going to let you tap into town water, or town sewer, because that was the big issue. And so my reason for saying it is, as a part of the pro forma, when they first come in before you, they have to actually say, is it going to be rendering it uneconomic? And they work their numbers, and they put it just right so that they barely make some money. And of course, something like this, when you take Bartlett Fields for 250 units with a, I'm assuming this is the number, $20,759,000. I think that's the Z, no, that's the projected annual water use. Then if you take the meters, what is it?
3.5 million.
3.5 million. That's when they're going to turn and say it's...
$15,000, right.
And I'm not saying I want them to pay it. I absolutely do. It's just, how do we try to ensure that they don't get the skip out on it? Because they're going to be the biggest offenders for tapping into our water.
Right. Can I slide off of that a little bit for a second? We discussed this off and on in committee for almost two years. And we've been asking, probably not that issue as much as we should have done, but we've covered...
It's all right.
What if I'm only putting up one bedroom? What if I'm putting up 1,000 homes? We've tried to think of every potential wrinkle in this to make it fair to citizens, fair to developers. In the case of a 40B, for instance, we found by doing research, not only just math playing around, but talking about communities, that it's clearly in the best interest of a resident, regardless of their financial situation, because they're paying for only their water at individual rates. And when they're putting in a situation in their, say, 12 to 20 year building, they're paying higher rates because it's higher consumption. And so that individual resident, whether it's a tenant or an owner or whatever, is actually being punished by, even if they're conservative, even if there's only one person in that unit and there's six in the other, you're helping subsidize the water use for the people who might be wasting water, or the people have six in their unit. So in the long run, the cost might seem high upfront. I think it's more fair to individual citizens along the way when they're fully knowing exactly what they pay, what they use, and they have control of their own bill.
I agree with you.
It's also, I mean, we have people here who are seasonal. I just heard anecdotally recently about an older gentleman who was away, came home, found a bill, found a leak. It had been going on for months. He had no idea. And so this is also to help prevent things like that, because there could be ongoing damage. And even just a little bit of water over weeks and weeks and weeks can create a big mess. So I'm wondering if we did a little adapting or editing to have a 40B...
I don't know. Because I mean, I, I don't know whether even if they...
Exemptions with that? Because we, believe me, we kicked 100 exemptions out, and our committee was divided. It's a good idea, it's not a good idea. How are we going to come up with this? And so if we spent a little more time trying to make it, again, bulletproof from what you're saying, because we feel very strongly that this is a good idea. And other communities have done this. Cohasset installed it several years ago. And when I asked the admin in their water department if they had pushed back, you know, developers saying, well, we're going to sue you, you can't do that, she said, no, not a problem. Things were just moving around along. And there are bigger developments that have gone in, whether it's 12 units or 150 units, now all have single meters.
Have you found, because I know this, the law from the state changed in 2005, whereas generally tenants never really had to pay for their water. And then the change of the law began to give landlords the opportunity to say, well, we can begin to push that kind of cost. You pay for what you use, in essence.
Some places, some, some communities have a submeter. But again, it's then up to the landlord going in and reading that.
That's what my question, otherwise...
That's what most communities do. They don't require, I actually didn't find any other communities in Massachusetts that do require it, we reversed. But they do allow it.
How many, see, this is what I'm saying, like, I don't believe we have an awful large number of apartments here in our town.
Right.
But if we were to go to, shall we say, more urban areas, Brockton, absolutely, Rockland, probably, and some of the other areas, how many of those towns have actually found that the landlords have begun to do the submetering in order to push those costs off themselves and onto the tenants? Do you have any idea? Or even, I'd say Marshfield might have more apartments to some degree.
But again, this wouldn't just be apartments. This is not just rental units. When you think about condominiums, I mean, even central school.
Well, do, do condominiums, I would have thought they would have had separate water meters right out of the gate.
Not necessarily, no. We have a, we have a water board member who is in a condominium and also had a leak undetected issue because they don't have individual meters.
As a part of their comment fee. So you're paying a percentage of the general comment?
I think most are that structure, that model. So in some of the other towns that do allow submetering, the water department just hasn't wanted to touch the additional bills. That's when they're basically, they, they were very honest and said, it's just too much work for us. So we have the landlord, landlord needs to install all the individual meters and bill the tenants directly when the landlord pays the master fee to the water department.
Is this something that mandates that they do that? In other words, right now, let's assume at the condominium that you're at, there's, is this going to mandate that they have to be, that they'll have to install and submetering?
Yes. So, and...
An individual.
It'll be for all new developments.
All going forward. Okay.
And so to Town Council's point that she is concerned as well about kind of the water department having to then follow up on more and more potentially delinquent bills. You know, I spoke to Kevin and to Sean Anderson about this a number of times, and both are fully in support and say it's completely doable, no matter how many units there are. What's the other piece of it? So basically, and, and so Town Council's advice yesterday, so we can continue to think about this, would be to figure out there's a structure under which they would pay the initial $14,000 connection fee for this single meter, but maybe there's a rate structure, there's a way for the landlords to pay the master bill still, but then, but still have submetering. So I don't know exactly how that would work so that the burden wasn't on the town, that there's 250 additional bills, that it was still on a landlord. So I don't know how that would work. Again, that just came in yesterday, and something that we can discuss. But that was her bigger concern. And it seems to me, why a lot of towns don't acquire it is just because they're kind of too lazy to, and to buy their own initiative, they're too lazy to, to take on additional billing.
Town Council had one other concern. This requires submetering. And she, the email said that may run afoul of state law. It says may allow submetering. So we might want to tweak this to say, submeter or not submeter, but you're going to pay as if you submetered.
Okay, that's a good solution.
So if you don't want to do a submeter, you're still going to pay as if you have 100 meters, even if you decide as the landlord or the builder to just have one.
But then you don't get any of the benefits of...
No, but her, her point is, she's not sure legally we can require them to submeter because the state statute says a landlord may.
So, and with the, I think, what she's, and the way I read it was that we can't require the landlords to charge the tenants. We can't require that the tenants pay, basically pay their own bill. She's saying you can still charge the 14, like, you can still charge it upfront free, but we can't require the landlords to bill the tenants individually. That's what it was. So, but the way I read it was that the requirement was in the billing and not in the initial connection fee.
Yeah. I mean, I'm sure it is possible to require the levels to pay a $14,000 connection fee for each unit, regardless of whether the landlord decides to charge tenants individually.
But she says the fact that the state statute says a landlord may, as opposed to shall, charge a tenant, the water use is charged may include the town from acquiring a landlord to do so. So I read that as in, as in being the charging of the tenant.
Right. But if you put in a submeter...
Right, but if you put in a sub meter...
Right, then how else would you get around it? That's a second...
Right. So you don't, you can put a sub meter if you're not going to charge them for their own individual water use.
Right, unless, yeah, I, yeah, like I said, I don't know how that would work. If there's like a pre-pay out, I don't know.
Yeah.
Well, it addresses one of the objectives. If you charge them, we get the infrastructure funds.
Yes.
If we get both pieces, then there's the conservation motivation.
Right.
I'm happy with getting 50%, half of the pie at baby at this point.
Fine. And we would continue to charge them the higher rate in that case?
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
John, any questions? Tony?
I think it's a great idea. I don't like the fact that you lose the conservation component of it potentially, but, you know, the 40B aspect that John brought up is going to be fought every time because it ends up to be very, very big numbers, which, as Karen said, we can use in our infrastructure. But when you bring out all the points about the conservation aspects of it, I mean, it really, you know, holds water. It's really relevant. So I support it. I think we should, we should consider it. And it'll be impactful on just the five, you know, we do a lot of units that are, you know, five to 10 condos where people take advantage of that. And, you know, even, every little bit helps, so.
Can I just ask a question about 40Bs? So they can get around items in the water rules and regs?
They can get around every rule and reg.
Anything, right.
It's, the only one that they can probably, they can't, is conservation because it's mandated by the Wetland Protection Act, which is another state. So that's why it's a comprehensive permit. They go to one body and they're able to avoid going to each and every one under the zoning and that's...
Right, but they can override local conservation, not state. So the council, are we have a 50-foot no build on our conservation barriers? The state's 25 feet. So if our conservation commission says 50, they go to the Housing Appeals Committee and say, "No, 25." How'd you go?
Right.
I would also like to say, you know, just from a forward-looking perspective, I know the goal for the town is to eventually have an affordable housing. 40Bs won't be an issue. So we want to plan for the future and not just plan for 40Bs.
Well, I'm only raising, thinking like...
Oh, absolutely.
Because the ones that are going to be coming massive are the biggest ones.
Right, because those are the biggest ones.
And I can just see what they're going to do. And we need the revenue for our infrastructure.
Right.
So I'm just trying to figure out how to, you know, I suppose, and if that were the case, that they, ZBA could reduce it, but provided they don't give it away, you know, that's...
They don't get it if they don't ask.
Right.
So if you have a lot more familiarity with 40B than we do, maybe there's a way you could help us break this so that it works both for profit as well as...
Well, you, not to put a damper on it, if they decide that they want to say, "I'm building 250 units. It's going to cost me $3.5 million to sub meter. That makes my project uneconomic. I now can't build this to have affordable units." They go to the state, they say, "Here are the numbers. It's uneconomic." The Housing Appeals Committee rules against these in towns every single time. Okay? I can't think of a single case where a city or town has won at the Housing Appeals Committee. So it's just, the game is rigged against you at the Housing Appeals Committee. Now, cities and towns then sue and appeal your Housing Appeals Committee decision. We actually have a decision mixed upon law, tend to do better. The Housing Appeals Committee says, "No, we have an overriding requirement for affordable housing." They said it's uneconomic. The burden's on the town to prove that it's not. But again, you ask for $14,000 and maybe you get eight or nine or 10 or something beyond what we're getting now. So you just, you can't make it bulletproof against 40Bs. It's just, it's just not possible.
So can I ask one more, another idea is that if we make the, provide the option where you continue to charge a higher rate if you choose not to sub meter, can we make that only applicable for developments that will be rental properties? So anything that would be owner occupied has to have a sub meter? Right? Or does that...
Yeah.
We couldn't do something like that, could we?
Can.
Say that again?
So that if we were going to continue, if we were going to allow people to not, to continue to have a master meter, but they would have to pay the single meter fee, in essence, we're not requiring a landlord to charge a tenant for water, could we then only require, provide that option if it's going to be rental property? So therefore, any owner occupied unit or home would have to have a single meter.
To preserve the conservation?
Right. And to not just allow everybody to get around it by just paying money, which I know we need for infrastructure, but...
Well, the money's the same either, either way.
Yes, that is true.
Couldn't that be construed as being discriminatory?
I don't know if that's...
I'm saying because it might be low, lower income for people and they might...
But would they want to pay for the water that they're using and not someone else's?
They might, but we got to look at it from the perspective of the contractor who's going to say, "I'm building this, I'm Mr. Nice Guy. I'm building it for people who are affordable or for low income." And now you're putting us at a disadvantage, discriminating against poverty versus somebody who can build condominium or apartment, not so much apartments.
But it's not because Karen's point is the same money. It's $14,000 a unit either way. The only difference is actually if you're going to pay a higher rate for your water use because you're a master meter versus paying the rate then.
I'd have to look at it and just run the example. And the reason I'm saying is that way it would be, providing you're not discriminating potentially, because that's, that will be the issue. And it's not necessarily for the benefit of the tenants that it's being appealed. It's because they don't want to pay it. But they'll use the tenants as the, as the basis for it, that's all.
One other nuance on that, John, is we have had developments that have gotten approved through planning where they have said they will set aside X number of units at an affordable Is that, I mean, that to me is something, if I'm the developer, I'm going to say, "Why am I paying full market rate for..."
Well, if I'm a developer, what I'm going to say is that these additional costs are making it so I can no longer afford to have an affordable unit. Because my costs are going to be so much, instead of paying $14,000, I'm paying 1.4 million. I can't have affordable units now because I won't make any profit. I can't take that cost and add it to the market rate units to make it back up. That's what a developer would say if he was coming in. That's what they're saying of 40B. They're just going to say it's not economic. That's their, that's their buzzword for everything. It's not economic. If I have to do that, it's not economic.
To your point, Karen, there haven't been too many developers who've come in and said, "I'm going to carve out one or two affordable units, even though I'm not mandated to." But those who have would probably then take whatever that cost and potentially do the metering because that would be a good thing. But they don't, there's far and few who actually do that.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is a good idea and I think we could spend all night saying, "What if, what if, what if?" You know, I think we look at the suggestions that town council made, we incorporate those changes.
Yeah.
And then if someone wants to, you know, build a 40B and challenge it?
Fine.
They're going to challenge it anyways.
So what, Jim, what do you think about having that option be just for rentals? Should I provide two sets of language?
Or is it just 40B versus not?
No, 40B, I mean, 40B is going to pick...
Well, because 40B could be rent or ownership, it could be the one, so...
Well, tonight you just want us to...
Yeah, I mean, you...
...propose policies.
It hasn't been finalized yet, has it?
No, I provided kind of the chicken scratch of what it would look like.
I mean, we do have different rules for rental and ownership, so I, you say, you put it in, if someone wants to challenge it, the town council says, "You can't do it, then you can't do it."
So, try to run it by her.
Yeah, we try it and let it play.
Why we try that? Because I'm like, I'm all, can we maybe then put it on, if not our next meeting, come back on the 2nd of May? Is that okay?
I'm not in town on the 2nd of May.
How about the, when's our meeting after that, Lorraine? Do we have another one after that?
16th, it'll be two weeks, right?
13th, 14th?
Yeah, town meeting.
Town meeting on the 13th?
Is the 23rd full, right, agenda?
I guess, I'm not sure. I haven't seen it. Is it pretty full on the 23rd?
It's getting there.
The 23rd?
We'll sure as soon.
Yeah, we can put on the 23rd.
We'll be meeting next door at the same time.
Okay.
You'll no longer...
Do we have another, do we don't have another meeting after the 2nd of May? Before the election?
I think it's on May 7.
Wow.
I believe it's May 7th and May 21st.
The 21st isn't good for you.
And then the special town meeting.
Actually, the 21st is great for you.
Yeah.
I'm not on the board, I'm on the 21st. So my question is, if we did the, you said the 7th? I'm only asking because we're going to have the sewer, an update on sewer on the 23rd and we've got some people coming in probably. So I'm just trying to figure, are you around the 7th? You're out?
I'm going the week.
Okay. All right, let's see what we can do on the 23rd. How about that?
Well, hopefully it can just be this change of language all run by town council. I'll send it over and hopefully it will be...
That'll be good then, okay.
And we'll be next door meeting at that time, so you can kind of...
Oh, right.
...for the end if you need to.
Good. Is that any, thank you. Thank you for doing this. It's really good. We, it's like anything, you try to tweak it and of course, there's always going to be a flaw, but at least if we can get it perfect, as perfect as we possibly can, that's okay. Yeah.
Thanks, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, ladies. All right, seeing that it's 9 o'clock, we are going to take our 10-minute intermission. And hopefully, do you have music back there for the intermission? Because Anne Burbine's not here. No? Okay. 10 minutes, we'll come back and reconvene at 9:10.
Sigh.
I can hear fun.
It's not worth it.
All right.
Just in case you want to mention it.
Oh, yes, thank you. Yep. All right. So let's get back on, on air. And I guess our next one, we're going to skip over the ambulance rates because we wanted to go to, where is it here?
New Business 4.
New Business Number 4, just for the purpose of special town meeting warrant for May 13th, 2019. And in particular, we have Steve Kirby, our OPM for the senior center. Actually, I'm trying to get my computer going here.
So I sent the board some numbers last week after a couple of meetings. The original number for the senior center was 11.9. The new number, and Steve, just throw something out if you're wrong, was about 12.2. What that included was a generator for the senior center, the access road that goes around the back, the connecting road, relocation of a major gas line that goes through the property, and the repair, but not the replacement, of the roof of the gym. Okay? So that raised a figure. The generator was about 200,000, the road and the gas line about 50 grand apiece. And that was the difference in the 300,000 from the 11.9. There's other additional work that could be done, total is about a million dollars, I think, Steve. And that would be a roof replacement as opposed to roof repair, the glass block around the top of the gym. And there's a generator currently in the gym that's older than anybody on this board or me that would be replaced for about $100,000 as part of the project. So the number that'll go on the warrant will be at least, instead of 11.9, will be the 12.2 unless you wanted to back something out. And I believe the generator at 12.2, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, is a keep the building going generator, but not a full building generator?
For the gym.
For the gym.
For the senior center.
Yeah. For the senior center, is it a full building generator?
Yes. A full, full building generator for the, for the senior center.
So the gym is just keep the pipes from rusting, but it wouldn't operate the gym, which I don't think we need to do on a...
As far as we know, that generator is there definitely for the fire pump, but we don't know quite what else that's, that's tied to. Question, did you get the, I had sent over late today some, some spreadsheets on...
Yes.
You have those? Okay.
I didn't get them.
Yeah, we did.
I didn't get them.
Yeah, we did.
I didn't.
Oh, were they, were they just in the spreadsheet you sent? Oh, I'm sorry.
I said just especially, I didn't, I didn't get them, Steve.
I'm having to make copies.
I brought copies.
Oh, sure. Sorry, I meant the ones you, you got the ones he sent.
Yeah.
We can share up here.
So we asked Steve to come to discuss the change in the numbers, the board can answer any questions, the additional numbers, if you want to talk about that. And then the board can decide if they want to either put the whole thing on as one number...
Thank you.
Or you could open the warrant and have two articles, one for the main number and the second for the additional things that could be done. It doesn't in any way change the ballot question. That stays the same because that's just for whatever it is that you vote. So...
So with the million dollars for the gym, which would be complete new roof, $100,000 generator, and then the glass blocks that are the glass blocks, the old-fashioned blocks around the perimeter of the upper area?
Yeah, for sure, yeah.
Is that replacement of all those glass blocks, Steve, and the windows over there? Or is it just, what's that?
I'll show you what I did on this, on this spreadsheet, which is, is the bottom section of the one that's got the highlighted arrow.
Yep.
That's the veteran's gymnasium potential. So, and I did, on the glass block, I did an alternate for, for you to look at. The first line item is to replace the glass block and the windows that are set in that glass block with translucent panels. That was $436,100. We had talked about potentially an alternate of repairing the broken glass block and, and that would be $228,000 because there's quite a few of them and they'd have, they'd have to get up there with man lifts and, and/or stage. So there is a significant difference, but you still, you still have the glass block, which translucent panels are going to give you a little bit more energy efficiency than glass block. Then I was showing, replacing the existing 150-kV generator, that's about $100,000. And what I'm showing is, is what the estimated cost is, what we carried in the current estimate, which only really applies to the roof, and then what the delta is, and then the alternate delta is the repair of the glass block. So you have a couple of choices.
Yep.
And then the last item is new roof versus the repairs. We carried $123,000 for repairs. An entire new roof on, over the gym would be $473,000. So you have, you have a delta 350. And I also put in here, just, just for your knowledge, the, the fit out for the SCTV studio, we had estimated that as about $340,000. At this point right now, that's deferred till later, but I figured it'd be something you might want to know anyway.
So the roof, do we have an idea of when, last time it was repaired or replaced? Any, any idea?
All we know that it's no longer under warranty, so it's probably 20 years old. They have been having leaks. We've looked at it, I mean, you know, you can repair a roof by redoing seams and maybe cutting small sections off, but it's sort of a Band-Aid. We really don't know what the integrity of heat distribution is at the areas that it's leaked. Could be saturated. You know, you may be losing heat through that roofing in areas.
What type of roof is it, Steve?
It's EPDM.
Is that like a rubber roof?
Yeah, it had a rubber roof.
Okay. How many square feet does that roof?
Um...
It's off my head. And does it have interior drains, or is it pitched all to the outside?
It has a slight pitch to either side.
Okay.
So, there's gutters and sheet metal that would go with it.
Okay.
Actually, I think we took it out of this. I've got so many estimates at this point, I think we took it out of this one.
The gym's going to be, what, 100 by 100? Or is it more than that?
I was going to say, not 100 by 70 or something.
10,000 square feet at the most. Right, 100 by 100 is 10,000, so...
Well, the gym and, Steve, the roof included gym and then the atrium outside and everything, so it's going to be longer than that.
Yeah. Be the whole building.
Whole building, so it's bigger than that, Sean.
Okay, I have no idea.
But I would imagine a $100,000 repair is going to repair it.
Excuse me?
I mean, a $100,000 repair is going to fix the roof.
Right. Well, again, these numbers have the roofing number and then the overhead profits that get added on to it, because you're going to have a general contractor. So, this is a total amount. The roofing itself is probably, the roofing contract is probably $100,000.
Yeah, but that's going to repair the roof. It's not...
Right. Yes, I mean, we would redo all the seams, all the membrane seams.
Steve, did you have, like, to get a number like this, did you have a roofing company go up there, Steve? Or is it... How do you go about that?
Well, Bardman had a building enclosure associate, is a forensic consultant who had exterior building envelope assessment on it.
Okay.
They wrote a report. That report was given to Davidus, who did the estimate for Bardman.
Okay.
That roof is 13,270 square feet.
Makes sense. Okay, so that's that component.
Yeah, so if you go up to the top, this pertains to the Senior Center. And what I'm showing here is what, over the past few weeks, certain things that have been added into the requirements for the Senior Center building, what the item is, what the estimated cost is, what we had, again, what we had carried in the original estimate, and what the delta is. Beginning, the first item is the generator. Originally, we had a generator in the building, but it wasn't a whole-building generator. So, the whole-building generator is $320,000 plus the 104 that we carried. So, there's $215,000 delta there. The connector road, which we had as a future potential item, which has really come up as being something that everybody wants, which is the connector behind, coming out of the new parking lot, behind the B wing and tying into the tennis court, the soccer field parking lot, that's $30,000. The bidirectional amplifier, we're carrying that cost because we don't know whether we're going to need it or not. Essentially, that's the system for when the building is built, fire department goes into the building, if they lose their radio signal, then you need to have a bidirectional amplifier. You don't know that until the building is built. We don't think we're going to need it because it's a wood-framed building, and generally you have problems when there's a concrete block and steel and poor concrete slabs. Bringing that number, we'll do some of the roughing so that we don't have to tear any walls out, but the equipment itself, we may not need once we get to the annual job. So, still carrying it in the budget. Chief wanted to have a hydrant on-site. We didn't have that in the site work, so I added 5,000 for that. And then, as we had talked about previously, the gas line, the service coming in from the street, services the gates, goes right in front of the stadium. We can't move the building enough to leave it in place, so we're going to have to relocate that. Appears to be a two-inch line, but we're going to have to deal with the gas company to do that. So, I carried 50,000 for that. That's sort of a place, we're not going to get any real response from the gas company until we get in touch with a work order, you know, the job is going forward. I think that's enough to do it, because the gas line, it's a straight shot right from the street. So, going across the delta on that column, that's where we get the 332,000 that's being added to what we had originally estimated at 11.9. So, that's sort of the recap sheet of revisions and/or potential added scope. And then the other sheet is, what I did is I simply plugged those numbers back in, not the gymnasium numbers, but the Senior Center numbers. I also reduced the contingency. We were carrying it at 8%. I reduced it to 5. I really don't want to go any lower than that. And ran the numbers again, and we're at the 12,200,000.
How much did you save from the contingency change?
It was about $200,000.
Where did that get absorbed?
We add, well, part of what we did on that was we did have to add a little bit into the soft cost because we were low on the audiovisual. So, I moved some of those numbers around a little bit.
Didn't you have some additional fire pump work too on the gymnasium? Or is that not part of it?
That we actually, we're hoping that the fire pump, if it needs to be addressed, would be taken care of as a maintenance issue for...
I don't know if that's what part of the money was.
That was about 25,000.
What audio, $200,000 of audiovisual did you add?
The audiovisual component is now 100,000.
So, where did that $200,000 go?
That got spread into some of the soft cost, and then, as some of these numbers get added up, the markups raise them a little bit. So, that, those numbers were taken up in some of the markups as these columns add up, the markups increase the hard cost numbers. I wanted to make sure that I got my total at the bottom. We weren't going over what we're saying as 12.2, but worked it back into, okay, we're going to take something else additional. And that was always sort of in our back pocket, so to speak. I started out at 10, everything went to 8, and I don't want to go over to 5. 5 is okay when you're doing a new building, but we do have the component of the gym and the demolition. My biggest concerns for unknowns would be anything underground, which that occurs on any project. Our demolition of the C Wing, is there any asbestos that we don't know about? And really, the elevator built. It appears that it's pretty straightforward, but we are tying into existing. But we have a little over half a million dollars in contingency.
All right, so how does everybody feel about the Senior Center with that number of 12.2, in essence, with the modifications that we have? Well, we just talked about a generator in the library, and it wasn't $320,000. It was $220,000. So, is it... Why would this be $100,000 more? I think the footprint's about the same.
I don't know what the size is of what they sized on the library. Was that a whole building?
Yeah.
We've got the generator itself, got the labor to install it. We've got to put a reinforced pad for it. We've included an option of having acoustical panels around it because of the proximity to the neighbors and the fact that it's going to be on the street, and also right next to the Senior Center, because we don't have that much room. It's essentially got to go between the existing stone wall and that front face of the Senior Center as you're looking at it from First Parish, because that's where the electrical room is. So, we're adding acoustical panel, panels that keep the noise down as much as possible, and then a fence screen around it, just as a visual.
I think they're comparable.
All of which the library's talking about. I mean, you've got residents and people in the library, fire rooms.
Yeah, there's no acoustic, I can't say that word. Soundproofing.
These external generators that you see, I think they have insulated panels on them to begin with. They're standalone and they...
They come with a standard panel, but you can get an upgrade on the panels. We did it at the Foxborough Town Hall. That building was built behind the existing town hall, right up against the property line, and the generator was behind the building. So, that was something that they decided to do to...
We have one right next to the new junior high, and I haven't heard any complaints about that. I don't know how often it runs.
It's only there for emergencies. It's not like it's running all the time.
It exercises once a week, probably for about a half an hour.
Same with over here. Steve, can I ask you, on the third page, commissioning HVAC?
Yes.
Okay, so all brand-new equipment, right? Everything's new, new building. So, however, is this, this is an addition to the installation of it?
Correct.
Commissioning is starting it up and making sure things are balanced, right?
It's part of code now.
Right.
Yeah, we didn't use to add this in. It was more of an option. Now, the HVAC, a minimal amount of commissioning is part of the code. So, we're including it on every single job.
Not part of the installation, not part of the subcontractors?
This is third-party HVAC expert coming in, working with the contractor during his startup. Actually, he actually starts early on with review of submittals, and he comes in when they do startup, when they do function testing, to make sure that the system is running properly, even though you have architect, you have a mechanical engineer, you have an OPM.
This person, he would be listed as a sub-filed bid, right? He would be, he might be John Danny Company, correct? It might, you know ahead of time who's going to come in and commission this?
We, yeah, if everything goes...
The point I'm trying to make is, nothing to do with you, but the library, you know, that didn't go so well, so we just want to make sure.
Yeah, this would come either under Vertex as the OPM or Bardman as the architect. It would not be part of the contractor's scope. It's definitely a third-party coming in.
And that's $30,000 to start up the AC and make sure it's working right?
Well, it's the whole system. It's air conditioning, it's starting up the boilers, making sure the thermostats are working properly, checking the balance report.
But you see where it'll go with this. If it's done right, they're not going to have to do too much. If it's done perfect, yeah, they just...
Aren't they responsible for it?
He says it's now part of the code.
They are responsible to make sure that the system operates properly, but now they have someone else that's looking over their shoulder, making sure that that occurs. And I've seen it on the other projects where it is handy, because they do find something. And they also, if there's problems with the system, it's another expert that's weighing in on it. But, the issue is, it used to be a choice, now it isn't. So, I mean, you could have a lot more. I mean, you could give a commissioning agent a lot more things to do. You even, you know, you have commissioning agents for building envelope, where they come in, do the spray tests on the windows, do tests on the roof.
We did up there. Concrete.
Well, that's separate. That's in the testing of materials. That's a different line item.
Gotcha.
And that's increased now because of code, because they have checked 17...
I mentioned that because we're going to probably go to litigation over concrete for the middle school, so that's why I'm like, mentioning it.
I'm sure there was a testing agency there, so...
Okay. So, with respect to just the top, center, Senior Center, how does everybody feel with that number at this point?
I just have some questions about just the process.
Sure.
So, and this is really for Jim. So, we've got these revised numbers. Have they been presented to PBC or Council on Aging at this point?
Council on Aging has seen them. PBC seen them yet?
These numbers that you're seeing, these are as of today. We presented numbers to the PBC on the 20th, the meeting on the 26th, and told them that we were in that 11.9 to 12.2, but we were still working on the numbers. We're having a, they're having an interim meeting on the 7th to look at, really look at the final budget.
And now, those conversations, you were talking about adding the generator and all of that? So, they're aware?
They're aware, yes.
Okay. Council on Aging has not had that conversation yet.
Well, I mean, we have, you have Lyndon, you have JD on the PBC.
They're at the PBC.
So, they sort of know already, and I've been keeping Steve Shea informed by email as things come up.
And as far as the process for, doesn't the warrant say 11.9 now?
Yeah, but you voted to allow me to make changes.
Pending.
Pending final numbers, so, but we wanted to bring it back. I didn't want to just change it, have you guys get the warrant book and go, hey, buddy, wasn't it 11.9? And have everybody say the same thing, so we wanted to bring it in. So, I had the ability to make those changes. It's still in draft, hasn't gone to the print yet, so you can make that change.
Do that for free.
And the generator wasn't originally anticipated because of cost?
Originally, there was no generator at all. Then, there was talk about having a generator, so the generator became a partial-building generator that would, you know...
Oh, that wasn't...
Heat on and some lights and so forth. And then, we morphed into, let's have a whole-building generator. You've got, we have to have a fire pump there, and if we're going to potentially make that secondary shelter or warming station, then you really want everything operational.
Well, it certainly makes more sense to have a full generator there because it has a kitchen.
It's a commercial kitchen, yeah.
Yeah, for a shelter and fraud, because the library clearly can't do that.
And we met with the Shelter Committee yesterday, sort of.
Will there be tweaks, then, do you think, to the building design?
They, no, they were happy with it. We already have, as part of being able to qualify the Senior Center as a shelter, is to have shower facilities. And we've included two showers upstairs and two of the bathrooms. So, that's a big point for that sort of, I guess, certification.
I don't know what we do here. You know, the numbers keep going up. We say this looks high, but what do we do? Do you reduce it? You know, if we say the generator looks like $100,000 too much, because we just got a quote from somebody for our library, what's, you know, it's at 12.2. We didn't want to go that high, you know? But what's our recourse? You know, you're telling us it's this number, you know, it's a public document now. I guarantee you, the commissioner for the HVC is going to come in and his bid is going to be 29,500, and it's done deal. So, I don't even know what we do.
Right.
I have a, I mean, I think these things are needed. I agree with the items. I just don't know, is the number negotiable? I mean, what, I assume you did your best effort to get a quote that you think is reasonable for this?
We tried to keep, I mean, we tried to keep this at 11.9 as much as we possibly could, and we just got it down. I can't tell you what's going to happen on bid day. I mean, when we have an estimator estimate this in design, he's not estimating this project to win the project. He's estimating that to give us a good budget. We always hope and try and anticipate that on bid day, we're going to have bid savings that's going to be below our budget, and we can take that savings and put it back into the contingency. I don't want to say, yeah, on bid day, we're going to have a, you know, a project that's, you know, coming in at, you know, construction 10.7. We want it less than that.
But we've all been doing this long enough.
Want it to go over our number, and then we say...
What happens is you're conservative on this. It's a public document, the people go bid it with your conservative numbers. You know, it's almost like padding it as we go along. I don't know, we've talked, I've talked about this for 12 years, so I don't know what to do with it, the numbers always seem extravagant. I can only say the items. I think the generator's a good idea, the road connector's a good idea, the first, this is the first I've heard about, the amplifier, the hydrant. Chief says we need a hydrant, we need a hydrant. And the gas line, if it's where it is, you got to do it.
Do you have to?
You'd have to move the building back.
No, 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 not that. I mean, they'll run a gas line to a house for free. A two-inch line, that's a lot of product. I'd like to think they'd move it for free. They're going to, they make money on the gas.
50 grand, they might, but I mean, and...
If there was, let me tell you right now. If there was oil heat right now, okay, and you were going to talk about, they'd run the gas line for free to get the customer. Now, they've already got you, so they...
Right, that's the difference.
We could go to oil.
I guess I never...
Do a few. It's just, like Tony's point, you know, it's not too often do they, do these bids come in and they leave a lot of money on the table after they see the engineer's estimate.
Just the library's the only one I can remember.
Well, and then...
Middle school. Middle school came in well below estimates.
All right, but then, how many change orders do we sit through, Nancy?
Yeah, we're still well below.
All right, but...
I mean, really, it depends on what's going on in the economy.
Right.
You know, if they're busy, your bids are going to be tougher. If things are slowing down, they shop on their pencils and they come in with good bids.
It's all the market, and we can't necessarily predict that. I mean, we know that there is work out there, but, you know, there's certain groups of contractors that, you know, this becomes their whalehouse. And the last project we had, in Sudbury, we had eight bidders on it, so we had a good amount of competition.
What was that for, Steve? What type of project?
It was a...
Senior?
It was Water District Facilities renovation and addition, new building. But, you know...
Lot of competition.
It was less than 10 million, but still, it was, you know, a fairly good project. I mean, you know, you could certainly try and carve something out of this estimate and make it an alternate. I mean, one of the things that I was thinking about as an alternate would be the full roof of the gym. You make that an... You make that, make that an add alternate for, you have the repairs in the base contract, you have the total new roof as an add alternate. And, you know, on, on bid day, if they're low on the base bid and we can, we can afford that, the roof, then you have that done.
Nancy?
My only concern, I, I don't like moving numbers either, especially when they're moving in the direction upward. It's very hard to try to keep the estimates going. I just redid the estimates again as we were all talking about this. But, just to put it in context, the difference between 11-9 and 12-2 over 20 years is $60. So, when you're, when you break it down on a-
$60 per ye-
No, $60 overall impact to the average taxpayer over 20 years.
So, a couple dollars.
Yeah, it's about-
It was $4, I thought you were-
Yeah, it's $4, on the first year impact. But, my only concern is what happened with the public safety complex. That, that budget went, that budget was set at 16.2, it went out to bid and it came nowhere close. And that was not a good situation to be in.
Right.
I'd rather be a hero and have a budget that it, the bids come in under, and you can control what you do with that, with that. As Steve said, put the money in contingency. In the library, you didn't. You put some in contingency, then you held some under the selectance discretion that they couldn't, the building commission couldn't touch. And that's the amount now that you've been giving back, parsing back out because of the issues at the library. That's not the case on the middle school, but the middle school was so far under. But, my only concern is for the, any small difference of money, if it, if it's something that you decide that you want to have in the scope, that we don't have the same issue that we have with the public safety complex.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I mean, all we can really vote is the items, because we-
Right.
Clearly have no control over the numbers.
And that's definitely something within your purview, if you don't want to do them now, or want to do them separately in the article, or however you want to do it.
So, how does the board feel?
I say all the stuff for the senior center, yes.
Okay. So, that's taken care of. So, let's get to the gym. The gym is the translucent block with panels, I'm sorry, the glass block with translucent panels, that's for the windows up above. There is the alternate, which is just repair the glass blocks. How do people feel about that item? My feeling on the roof is, I hate to do a repair, I guess, given the age of the roof. To me, I'm thinking, at least replace the roof. That's the top, preventing any type of leaking. But, I can be convinced.
I'd have to believe that a repair is going to fix the leaks. I mean, it's a rubber roof. The structure, the, the structure of the roof is fine, right? We're talking about 30 years' worth of sun causing the rubber to go bad.
What happened to, and maybe Nancy, you can tell us, what happened to-
Really pushing it down the road a little bit by, by doing the repairs. It's, you're going to, you're going to repair a section, but then eventually some other section is, is going to go-
So, this is just going in, going in saying, here's the 10 bad sections, we're going to redo this?
Something like, yeah, yeah.
Didn't the school department do that with one of the schools?
Majority of the membrane's going to be there.
Had a repair, which people thought was a replacement, which was only a repair. And they, they repaired the parts that were leaking, but as soon as they repaired those, 10 more leaks popped up.
I mean, we know, we know they got a fairly major leak in, in the corner, the southeast corner, so that'd be something you'd cut out and repair. But, Nancy, you repair that, but then you've got other areas that you didn't touch that aren't leaking now. When are they going to go in?
Right.
You can't predict that.
Karen?
Then you got a wood floor in there.
Right.
So, I'm just, so the 12-232 number, which is all of the senior center, doesn't include any of these below, so?
Includes the 123.
Just the 123.
Correct, just a, just a repair of the existing roof.
So, to do this, we're adding almost a million, we'd add almost a million, so then we'd be up to 13, three?
No, we'd add eight or six.
Well, I'm rounding.
Yeah, it'd be 880, almost.
So, I, I kind of feel, given the numbers, the way they stand, is that I, I would say that we certainly want to do the roof, full repair. As far as the rest go, between the generator-
Full replace.
Or the glass blocks at this point, I think you just wait until the future what, what's going to happen there.
Well, and Steve's point, the roof, you could bid the roof as an alternate.
That's what I was thinking.
So, if the bids came in low-
Right.
We do the roof.
I was thinking doing that as an alternate.
And it, and then if you don't do it at all, if you do, if you put it as an alternate, and we could also, if something happens, as far as funding goes relatively quickly, but further on down the line, that's something that you could put out as a separate contract just to roofers, and, and you, you don't need a GC on it, because it's strictly roofing.
Mm-hmm.
You get, you've garnered a little savings there, not, not, but you can't wait too long, because the longer you wait, prevailing wage goes up and-
Yep.
You know? But, I, if we, if we do it as, as an alternate, in the, in the base contract is repairing the roof, the alternate number one is to replace the entire roof, and you have a number. I like that.
So?
What about the other two items, the generator?
What about the glass block, Steve? That's not hot with asbestos, is it?
No, it was checked and it is not. We've seen it in the past where the water in between the glass block is. We, we had them specifically test that and it came back negative.
Okay.
I think I would add that component with the roof.
Yeah.
With the alternate one as well.
The second alternate, which would be the glass block-
Repair.
For translucent panels.
So, what do we, is it just PVC?
It's, it's called, you see it a lot of times in, in schools and essentially gym tournaments where it's, it's a sort of whitish, but has a, has a grid to it. It's about six inches thick, it has light insulation in it, but it allows light to come in, but it isn't, it's translucent, right? And it has, has a, an R value to it, it's not as good as R value as, as a wall with, you know, various layers of insulation, but it gives you a lot, a lot more than, than glass block does. So, you wouldn't have, and right now they have, they actually have windows in some of those glass block where you have-
Right.
-sun coming straight into the gym, which I'm sure causes a glare at, at some point. This way, you're going to have diffused light coming in during the day.
Keeping the gym a little cooler in the warm weather.
It, it should. And, and, you know, if we're doing the roof, the roof is going to have probably more insulation to it, because what's up there, I believe, doesn't, doesn't meet the stretch code now. So, you'd, you'd have additional thickness of insulation on the roof. And whatever is up there, there's certainly areas that are wet.
That's right, saturated.
So, Tony, are you thinking of replacing the entire blocks with translucent panels?
Well, I'm trying to figure out between the two. It sounds like that the translucent panels are better than the block. And it's 220 grand just to replace the block.
Aesthetically, does it change the look of the gymnasium with the translucent panels?
I mean, it's, it's a different product, but it's, you know, we're not, we're not changing the, the height and, I mean, the width that goes all the way around the building, so.
Just some people say it's a historical building, I just want to make sure that they'd be happy with the historical look of the gymnasium.
We could use all translucent things.
Can we just, a timeout for a second? When we went to this plan, we decided that we were going to do the bare minimum to the veterans' gym in order to keep the costs down to build the senior center. That was the mission that we all signed up for. I agree that an add alternate for the roof makes perfect sense, you've got to protect the asset, you don't want to just patch it and be doing the same thing, you know, kicking it down the road. But, the other things, to me, unless they're structurally imperative right now, we said that we were going to put the elevator in, we're going to make it accessible, and, and call it a day for now to get the project done. To me, this feels a little like mission creep. I do think, you know, putting an add alternate, if the numbers come in, great, that makes sense, but, you know, if, if we can, you know, you can, as you say, you can certainly do the roof later, yeah, I wouldn't want to do it too much later, but-
You could do an add alternate for the glass block too, but make that add alternate number two.
Right.
Because the alternates, you have to take in order, and I think, in my opinion, the roof is, is the most important.
And to you, the glass block replacement is because it's really failing? Or energy efficiency, or both?
Well, you've got, you've got quite a few block that are actually broken.
That are just broken, okay.
Yes. And then, if you're going along with that, it's giving better energy efficiency, yes.
Okay.
And I was thinking, if you're taking, if you're working on the roof, you could probably do that at the same time, I mean, in a box-
I know, it's just the whole-
No, but I agree with you, and I wouldn't do it as part of the, I would do it as, if there's money at the end, yeah.
Different contractor, I don't, that roofing company is not going to do that.
I was going to have to approach it from the inside or the outside scaffolding, because those windows are going to have to be popped. I don't know, they'd probably do it from the outside.
So, maybe there is, I would, I would want them to do it from the outside.
Outside, yeah, because of the floor.
Yeah, we have that new roof.
All right, well-
And just one second on the generator, what's, does the one we have not work?
Our understanding is that it's, it's on its last legs. Does it work? I haven't witnessed it go on, so I, I can't say.
Sean, do you have any idea?
I haven't seen it, so I, I don't know, Tony, I wish I knew, but-
It's located in the crawl space.
In the, up, up above?
Below, below the, below the basement level. There's, there's a crawl space that, that's under that entire, entire gym hall.
And that's for, that's for-
Oh, utilities are, yeah.
No kidding?
And that's for fire, for, fire protection mostly, right?
We know, we know that it, it's there to service the fire pump in case the power goes out. It may be connected to other things, but we didn't really have it on our radar, so we didn't, the engineers didn't trace anything out to see what, what it, I'm sure it energizes some lights in hallways too.
So, the fire pump, is that for the suppression system?
Correct, yes.
But, isn't the suppression system pretty much aged?
It's not in the, it doesn't cover the whole building.
Like the locker rooms, that's the one I'm looking at, that, those are pretty, pretty worn.
And Chief's getting a new hydrant nearby.
Is it dry or wet? The suppression system?
It's wet.
It is wet. You cannot lose the heat with a wet system.
No.
It goes out.
The library mistake.
So, that is a necess, a necessary item?
I'm not saying it is, but I'm just telling you this.
But I'm saying, when the heat went out, well, did the generator go on when we lost electricity both last year and also over 12 years ago when we had, during the snowstorm, we lost it for like three days?
13, five days.
Yeah. I don't remember what the heck, what happened at the middle school.
I don't remember anything bursting, though.
No, no, I've never, I don't recall it, any pipes breaking at that time either, but-
This is something that could be done after the fact, though.
All right, right, right.
I, I think, you know, it's-
So, the roof is the add alternate.
Also a standalone type of thing.
We're not saving any money by doing it as part of the project.
No, not at all. We have to pay all the overhead on it, and we could do it as a capital project.
Right.
Which one of the-
Probably the same with the-
Yeah.
All right, so everybody, everybody's all into the, add alternate for the-
Roof.
I say that because we're five of 10 here, so we got to move along. We've been on it for 40, almost 45 minutes, so, Steve, I think that's what we're looking at for the final number then.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, I appreciate it, Steve, for coming in. Good. All right, now let's go back to Chief. Thank you, Chief, for allowing that to happen. We're going to be talking ambulance rates, rates. Nancy, you're here too with John? Great.
In the interest of time, we will be fast forward ambulance rate presentation.
Perfect.
So, we have the presentation in front of you, you have our current rate structure, it's been in place since 2011. Once, the first item that we wanted, that Chief and I wanted you to consider was to go to bundled rates, which is recommended by our third-party biller, ComStar Billing. It is currently required by Medicare, Medicare, so they are currently bundling our rates for the amount to Medicare. So, this would make it more, it makes it easier on everyone if it's that way. And you'll see on the reimbursements at the next slide down what would be included in that bundled rate, what gets bundled, and it's mileage, not mileage, airways, cardiac disorder, defibrillation, those types of things, which are currently rebuilt separately in an à la carte kind of situation. The comparisons of different towns' rates that you have in your presentation, those are all bundled rates, so most of our neighbors are already there. The only ones we found that were bundled were Duckspur, East Bridgewater, and Bridgewater. So, that's the first one for you to consider. The second one is we wanted to just go over the review of our rates. As we stated at the beginning, our rates have increased since 2011, even though Medicare rates had increased annually. We have a listing of our neighboring community rates, that was as of February with a handout that I left in your places, is as of people. Chief, just got a recent comparison between different communities, three of the communities on that, that different, on that grid went up, which was Rockland, Hanson, and one other, I think it was Halifax.
Marshfield is pending.
Yep, Marshfield is pending as well. On slide six, you'll see how our ambulance transports break down. Just to give you an idea of the number of transports, and we reviewed this with you a few years ago, that even though we bill out, so for fiscal 2018, we billed $2.1 million, the allowable amount of those bills was $1 million, so that meant that those funds that were covered by Medicare and Medicaid, they will automatically break down. And then the total collected of the million dollars that was allowed was $923,000. So, our collection rate is good, but of the overall amount collected billed, it doesn't look that, that promising. So, we collected 88.5% of everything that we were allowed to collect, but we actually collected only 42.3% of the $2.1 million we billed. I know that's very confusing, so-
Yeah, say that again.
So, basically, 50% of what we bill, we're not allowed to collect, because those patients are protected by Medicare or Medicaid. Which is how you'd want to see it, is that those members of the citizens' area, which are the most vulnerable, or the ones that have the greatest economic hardship, do have some protections for them.
So, you don't send them bills?
We send them, a bill will go out, but if the information has been collected at the time of transport, or the patient has identified themselves, they're in their insurance, they're able to do that, and have signed off, the ambulance company will bill out to Medicare and to the insurance before they ever send them a bill. If they don't get that information at the transport, they might get a full freight bill, they can respond back. But, there are windows within which we lose our ability to bill Medicare or Medicaid. We have like a 30-day window. They require, they've always required signatures, but now it's 100% requirement. So, if we don't have the patient's signature for that information-
Useless.
So, my question is, Medicare pays 30% of it, do you bill the individual for the other 70%?
No, we're not allowed to. If the individual has secondary insurance, we can go through that and get, pay additional funds for that. So the rate review that was on slide seven, I would ask you to hand out instead. It shows that the blue line situat for our life support, that's a BLS transport, is $907, so of the 13 that were reviewed that answered the survey, we are the 13th, so we're the lowest. As compared to ALS, which is advanced life support at first level, we were number nine out of 13, and ALS two, the more advanced life support, is eight out of 13. So what we wanted the board to consider was moving up to about where Norwell's rates are. We actually, one of the proposals that was in your packet was what Halifax had, and in the new rate study, Halifax actually adopted the top 50. So the top 50 is what our third-party biller recommends to us. It isn't what we put in their recommendations for motions, because we didn't feel that the board would find that palatable. The top 50 would put us with, right up there is number five for BLS, it would be, we'd be the third highest for ALS one, and second highest for ALS two. And there was only one person on the list that had adopted the top 50, and that was Halifax, who recently adopted it. What we, the Chief and I were more concerned with, and I, poor Chief hasn't been allowed to speak at all, I'm sorry, is that when we have instances of mutual aid, we provide mutual aid and we also accept mutual aid. If you have a motor vehicle accident, and it's a multi-car, and we have the situation, ambulance is responding, and we have Norwell responding, you don't wanna be paying something different, because you got in the back of the situat ambulance, or you got in the back of the Norwell ambulance, it could be significantly different. So we would like to bring the rates so that we're on par with our neighbors, especially the ones with mutual aid, so...
I'd be wanting to get into the situat one, no matter what, I'll tell you that.
I mean, it's, you don't wanna be having that price shopping, where you're like, oh wow, we don't have to pay more, so I want that. So we wanted you to take a look at the BLS rate and the ALS rate, and see if some adjustment could be made on those, not to the highest echelon, but more towards the middle of the pack. So based on where these changes in rates have just gone locally, proposal that we had before you for $1,250 for the base would make us eight out of 13, $1,950 for ALS one would make us seven out of 13, and then there would be no charge to the ALS two rate as it stands, because that is already eight out of the 13, and there would be no change to the mileage, because we're sixth up by 13.
Yes.
No change to the mileage, or no? We're very competitive for mileage.
Oh, we're right in the middle, okay.
Another factor is, we have 25 minutes to the hospital, they get a lot more care in a 25-minute ride than they do a 10- or 15-minute ride for most of the towns, the only other town's probably gross off the rest of the hump, as far as the time to get to the hospital, so there's a lot more intervention level of care that we give, because we tend to be after 25 minutes is the long ride.
How do you feel?
Well, I'll tell you. I, I think our taxpayers pay for this in their taxes, and I don't, I'm not trying to be the highest ambulance, you know, charging town around. I don't think we should charge anything more than the insurance is gonna pay, frankly. And I don't know, why are we trying to get more money out of this? Is it, is it gonna, what's it gonna fund? Is it gonna, you know, I guess, I, I wanna keep this as low as possible, at least for situat residents. You know, they pay for the fire department budget out of their taxes, and it covers that whole thing. And I don't think, you know, Medicare, you don't get it, but the individual person has to go to the hospital, their insurance company only covers so much, and they get the bill for the rest. And we try and collect it from them. And I don't think, you know, I would be against raising this hardly at all, you know, or minimum, I just don't think, I don't know why we would do it.
Insurance companies allow that, we pay, this is a service that town pays for a $5 million budget, so all this does is offset by about 20%, bring back roughly a million dollars. Every insurance company out there, if you look at the numbers, everybody is charging this, we're well below the average in the rates, so most of it's coming from insurance, very little is coming from pockets.
Oh, I would pay, whatever the insurance is gonna pay, pay it, but that's not what happens, because your insurance only covers so much, you pay your deductible, and then the town sends you bills for whatever it doesn't, whatever it doesn't cover. And everyone's insurance varies a little bit to some degree, but they're paying for the fire department budget in their, in their property taxes.
And this is a company that gets the same care anybody else does, a lot of people don't pay a tax that get the same service, and we don't turn anybody down, obviously. But, you know, the insurance does pay most, this is what the insurance allows. I mean, look at Hingham, their rates are the highest across the board, I mean, you know, 50% more than we charge.
Yeah, that's, but that's not, the goal isn't to charge as much as you can.
No, it's just to be in the middle, to be fair, what's the surrounding town...
What's fair? What's fair? Fair would be zero, right?
Fair would be zero, I guess, you know, if that's, if that's the insurance companies allow this, they charge us in our health insurance for these type of services.
And I, I agree that if the insurance is covering an X amount, then get whatever you can from the insurance company. But any amount that you're sending to a situat resident, above and beyond that, is the part that I have a problem with, because, like I said, they're paying for fire services in their, in their property taxes, in the levy that we hit them with, so, you know, it's not like this is, it's not like this is an enterprise fund where our water infrastructure's not working, and we have to charge more because it has to cover it. This is us wanting to raise prices because everybody else is, because you can. You know what this is just like? The school decided one year they're gonna start charging for parking, and charging for buses, it's, it's just another revenue stream, that I don't think we should try and, you know, increase any more than we have to.
We've done an ambulance service effort, it doesn't charge, and I think the other fact is, just because we have low rates, doesn't mean anybody in town gets a discount in their insurance, so this is insurance we've all paid to, I'm not trying to say we gouge, but we're looking here, what we're proposing, we're still gonna be eighth, and seventh, and eighth out of 13, well below the median, given the proposed rates we have, and need to propose 12th, 13th, 19th, 50th, and no change to the ALS two. Like, you know, we think it's, it's fair, it's, well, it's even below power that to raise the rates a little bit is gonna bring the revenue to the talented taxpayers, $120,000 estimated from ComStar, to bring back the revenue to the taxpayers.
No, but wouldn't you love giving this great service that you guys give, and having the town pay the least out of everybody? It'd be great.
What's the cost?
I mean, can you, is it, sorry, John, just one last question I asked a second ago, can you say, okay, we're gonna pay this for out-of-town stuff, and this for in-town stuff?
I wouldn't think so, I would think that would be discriminatory.
I think so, too.
Well, it's billing, it's not...
But if we start to, if it helps us, it's gonna start trying to, if they, if it was found to be legal, they would try to do the same to us.
You can't, you can't touch difference.
It's insurance, it's, you know, what they allow you to bill is a lot more than what we're asking, so we have probably, like I say, about 50%, 40% what they're asking.
Let me ask you this, I mean, we get that kinda disparity with Marshfield, with our water rates. Homrock's getting charged at a commercial rate, which is desperate compared to a residential rate, which originally was, so towns can offset...
That can be done, but this is insurance, insurance is, you know, it's a separate animal, so maybe, you know, this is what they, they allow us to charge, and if you look at the rates here, to go up to where Nancy's recommending and I recommend is, we're eighth, seventh, and eighth, we're two-thirds of the way down, so we're still a pretty good way out of you as towns.
Let me ask you this, so in other words, I understand we're setting the rate at what insurance companies will permit you to...
Not even close to the highest, we can go 50% higher than this.
Okay. Depending, Paul, what's our cost, in other words, per ride, per person, I get right now, what's, forgetting the insurance and reimbursement, what's the cost to take me?
Our cost is our fire department budget, $5 million. So that, to Tony's point, our costs don't change, our costs only go up. The, the whole point of billing for ambulances is you're billing for service, not everybody in town uses the ambulance every single day.
Correct, correct.
If you use the ambulance, you may or may not, we found from the information provided by ComStar, there were, of the 1,375 runs, there were only 80 of them that were uninsured. So the far, vast majority of them are insured customers, so they're paying to an insurance company to cover their medical costs. As to Tony's point, it can be varying degrees. They're also paying to the town to provide a service. So it doesn't make sense that we don't collect something for the people that use the service. The insurance company's collecting from them to pay for these services, and the customer's also paying for the cost of the service through the tax levy, they should get some relief.
Who should? The people that don't...
The taxpayers paying it both ways, they're paying the town taxes for the service, and they're also paying their insurance company, from the vast majority are insured, that have been on these transports. So why are they having to pay out of both pockets?
Who?
Why aren't they getting the citizens?
Mr. Smith that uses it.
The guy that uses it, or the guy that doesn't use it?
No, so Mr. Smith, well, the guy who, the guy who doesn't use it, doesn't get any benefit of having the revenue come back.
Right, but we don't charge for per arrest, we don't charge per, I mean, the police department...
If they allow that, you charge it.
John, I don't think, I don't think we would.
You charge for building permits.
I mean, I don't think we charge...
For what?
Building permits.
Building permits?
Let me, all right, so...
Lots of things in the Board of Health, you charge for the inspectional services, you know, we charge fees all across the board.
And I'm not saying reduce this to zero, I'm just saying, let's not increase it, because Hingham's twice as big, let's get...
Yeah, forget what the other towns, let's just, you know, I mean, I thank you for the exercise, but just forget it, to Tony's point, I have insurance, I take an ambulance ride. If my insurance does not cover it, I have to write out a check for the difference, is that?
Yes.
All right, it's getting late, and...
It depends on how old you are, and if you have Medicare.
Assume he doesn't have Medicare, assume he doesn't.
Yes.
Close, but not quite.
Now I don't, watch it now. Now I don't have any insurance, I tell you when I get in an accident, I don't have insurance, but I'm gonna write you out a check for whatever it is. Is that the same amount of money, do I pay?
Now, if you have Medicare, and Medicare says you can't do it, Medicare will pay whatever it pays.
About $480.
$450 to get you to the hospital, and you can't chase for the difference.
Right.
That means the town can't chase for the difference.
If somebody has a hardship to pay their...
And we have a baby with those, we have a baby...
Do you have a policy?
We have a policy, and I think, you know, possibly when, when somebody comes in there and they don't pay the first time, maybe we should send them a hardship form first, instead of saying, here's your second bill, hey, this is a hardship form, if there's a challenge with this, please let us know, we wanna work with you. That's something that we could do differently, that we could go out to say, listen, whether it's a 20% you're gonna pay, or whether it's the whole bill. If you look at the people that are uninsured, they're collecting $26,000 or $1 million, so it's not a lot that's collected.
I guess I'm, now I'm more confused. All right, so depending upon what type of insurance I have, all right, so you're saying there's a, there's a gap there. We're raising our rates because certain insurance companies will pay more? Isn't that what you said earlier?
We're raising our rates because we haven't raised our rates since 2011, our rates are no longer in step with what our neighbors are charging.
Yeah, but forget, so right there.
Like I'm saying, they give people back, they give a thousand dollars back for a boiler, right? Buy the higher-end boiler, whatever it is, they're gonna get back like some odd dollars, so it's, there's a, you, that's, you offer that to your customers, because they will pay it. Insurance, everybody's paying this insurance, we are liable for everybody else's insurance here, so insurance companies love us.
No, but insurance, we never, our numbers are not below what insurance companies would pay. No insurance company is gonna pay any of these numbers.
It depends on your insurance.
That's my question, so there is a gap, we're leaving, we're leaving money on the table, that's what I'm trying to say.
If you take an ambulance ride and pay nothing, and I live in Hingham, trust me, insurance will pay. I live in a town that's got one of the highest rates, I didn't pay when I took an ambulance ride a few years ago.
But...
It depends on your insurance company. You might have a deductible, you may not have a deductible, you might not even cover for ambulance, or you might have some that are on our list right now, that'll come before you, that's saying...
I know for a fact that it's decreasing every year, because the insurance, everybody's insurance that they have is going up, and all the benefits are going down. Every single insurance, everything, there's life insurance, excuse me, health insurance, everybody has. I don't think that, I don't think we're missing out on insurance dollars by raising this, I think we're just trying to get more out of the citizens by raising this, is my opinion. I think, maybe there's a few cases where it isn't that way, but I think the majority of them, you would probably agree, fall in that category.
I don't necessarily agree, but I, I will see the point. I think that citizen is going to pay for it no matter what. The citizen is going to have to pay for the service through their tax dollars, through the budget, or they're gonna get some relief in that budget, it's still gonna have to pay the tax dollars, because they're getting higher local receipts in the way of ambulance receipts, because someone else who maybe had to take it five times, their insurance kicked in five times more.
I have a couple of questions. So you, we haven't raised the rates, but have, I assume that the cost of providing the service has gone up?
Right.
Right, so we have that delta, too, that, that to me is a reasonable reason to think about adjusting.
We've raised the fire budget every year. Everybody's taxes have gone up every year.
So we're trying to offset that tax rate, you know, we're trying to give the citizens a break, they pay taxes every day, the insurance company's gonna allow you to bill that, and offset that $120,000, bring it back to the town. This is allowable billing by the insurance companies, and we're still well below what we could charge.
That's, that's my question, so we're leaving, in some cases, we're leaving money on the table.
I actually estimated on our run from 2018, ComStar said, it's a $120,000 difference, just making these modest changes.
How does ComStar get paid?
They get a percentage.
They get a percentage?
They get a percentage of what they collect, not what they bill.
Right, they get a percentage.
That's what they collect.
Of what they collect, not...
You think they want to charge more?
This is something we propose them on, but I think, you know, and it's, and if you look at right now, I think there's been, this has been an ongoing conversation, a lot of towns have gone to this, there's three towns right now pending going up higher from right here, but we are well below everybody else, and I think we're just trying to stay in the normal, what's fair, we're not trying to gouge anybody, but it's an allowable billing to an insurance company that we all pay to allow us to bill a bit higher, to offset some of the tax burden to this town to be able to service.
The board's position since I'm here is, when we charge a fee for whatever that service is, ambulance, building, whatever, we don't wanna be the top, we don't wanna be the bottom, we wanna be in the middle. So that's why we've always set out fees, Tony, in the years that I've been here, we never wanna be the top, we don't wanna be the bottom. So you are people out there who, for lack of a better term, are frequent flyers, that take the ambulance all the time, and they're getting a service, and you're paying for it because we're upsizing those runs.
I paid for it before the year even started, because I paid to pay the budget for the fire department well before.
Right, but we will, if we don't, let's...
And I want to say a lot of things...
So let's not, let's not charge for the ambulance.
We wanna be the lowest, okay? I wanna be the lowest in every fee that we charge.
Let's not charge for the ambulance. But then, you're gonna pay, people are gonna pay more taxes, it's gonna have to come out of someplace else, some other part of the budget is gonna have to, what do we benefit for ambulance rates right now?
About $900,000.
Okay, so we're gonna probably $900,000 from someplace else.
No, I didn't say, you're twisting it, I'm not saying, I'm not saying reduce this to zero, I'm saying why are we increasing it more?
But you're arguing this...
The reason why we're increasing it more is because other towns are doing it, and because we can. Those are the two reasons.
It's allowable, it's expected.
Right, that's because we can, because the cost...
Every single town on...
The other thing that I thought was interesting, though, is, you know, multi-car crash, and everybody comes, you know, being on par with our neighbors, there's some logic to that as well.
We can't, we can't think about that.
Yeah.
The ambulance, the ambulance rate or fee, every year pays a smaller and smaller and smaller percentage of what it costs to provide that service.
You should just offset it.
Okay, because the costs are going up, and the rates aren't changing. So every year, with the ambulance fees support, gets less and less and less, and that burden goes on to every single taxpayer in the town.
So what's, I guess...
I'd like to see some numbers on that.
Okay, yeah, I was gonna say...
$20,000, we make this change, it's a modest change, we're still two-thirds the way down, it's gonna bring a pocket of $120,000 more in revenue to the town, less tax money to the burden to the town. It offsets my budget down, you know, to provide the same service.
I think if you look at page six...
Well, it doesn't offset your budget.
Well, theoretically, it doesn't break the million-dollar track to the town, not my budget particularly, because it goes in the general fund, but if you look at the net...
It brings, it brings more money to the town, yes.
I think if you look at page six, it might have the information you're looking for, Tony, or at least some of it, you were looking for costs, it's showing the total of the transports...
Right here, look at that.
What page is that on, John?
It's on page 133, 207.
Okay.
Yeah, it shows the total number of transports, and it shows by far, the bulk of our transports are Medicaid and Medicare, so we're gonna be capped at what we can bill.
No, the comment was that the insurance company's paying less. So the insurance company paid $600 last year, and this year they're only paying 500. That was the, that was our, that was the statement, that's what I was reacting to. So the insurance companies are paying less and less for this service, so we have to charge more, that's what you just said.
No, 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 what I said is, the rates that we charge...
That we charge?
Are less and less of a percentage of the fire department budget, the cost of the service, because every year the service goes up, and the rates don't. So the rates are going like this, the cost of it, the rates are like that.
Meaning we make more runs?
We have more runs.
The cost of the run goes up. The cost of the run goes up.
Take people, cost is...
The cost of the paramedic goes up, the cost of the medication goes up, the cost of gas goes up. Every year the cost of a run goes up, but the amount we're building hasn't changed.
Right.
So more and more of that cost is on the tax rate as opposed to on the user of that service.
Right, but when we figure out the levy, we don't take any revenue into account. You know, we're not, we're not saying that we're gonna take the increase of $120,000 to fund the budget for the fire department.
We would, after we had at least a year of ambulance receipts, and we said, okay, ambulance receipts went up $150,000 last year. We're not gonna count $150,000, we might count 100 towards our local receipts, and that's gonna go up. We're not gonna discount it continuously, but that local receipt would go up. I mean, you know, Tony, I never say, we're up 200,000, next year it's gonna go up 220, we're saying next year it's gonna go up 160, and we're gonna be... So it does bring in additional money, it would be factored, and not this year, maybe not even next year, because we wouldn't have a whole year track record. Maybe we would, maybe Nancy would convince me, now Nancy likes to throw a lot of money, she likes to spend, spend, spend. But it, we would figure it in once we saw what those rates were doing, we'd say, okay, the rates are trending this way, that receipt's gonna go up.
I have a question, I don't know if you, just, so, the cost of, all right, let's see if I can phrase this right. The cost of a run, most of ours are, the majority of Medicare and Medicaid, and the, and so we're not, we're getting the, whatever, the 400 it is. How much are we, does that, how much does the run cost versus that, really?
So a basic run right now is $907.
So for every one of those...
Just a basic run without any of the à la carte items added, on a basic run, probably won't have any.
See, that's, that's the problem I'm having, is the amount that we're charging versus the cost to do it, that's, that's what you're going for now.
Well, yeah, but you're saying, so we're eating $500 for every Medicare or Medicaid, which is most of ours, is coming out of our budget.
What John just said is right, that's what we charge. It could only cost us $500.
No, that's what I just said, it costs $900.
No, this is what we charge.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So five, about five years ago.
I have a call per call is about $1,200 compared to ESE, I recall we did about four or five years ago, just from my recollection, every call costs about $1,200.
So we're losing $300 a run?
We're losing, this is, to provide this service, because you're only two guys in the ambulance, it's the fire app arrest, people that go up there, like, you know, it takes four or five personnel to, to, no, power access, whatever it is. I'm including all calls, fire calls, EMS calls, it's eleven and change. So I mean, all this is doing is offsetting the cost, offsetting from the tax burden, the tax that the insurance allowed you to fill that. It was still building well below the average.
Chief, what's your EMS right now? Isn't it like 53% or 51% of your calls?
EMS is 63% of the calls.
So do 63% of 5 million, that's an easy number.
Can you, because here's, here's where I'm at, it's at 10, 10:25, and right now, I see a two to two discussion on this, or vote on this, right now. I'd like to see more.
How do you know that?
Because I actually agree with Tony right now, and I need to look at the numbers a little bit more to kinda get a sense of it, because I feel, I know where Tony's coming in with the number, saying it's, that's what we're projecting, it's the cost that I'm looking at, because you do have, you know, over, I don't know where, 960 runs for Medicare and Medicaid, clearly paying at a lower rate, but if the cost to run those is $1,200, that's a difference of, if it's 400 a run, then it's a difference of 600.
$800.
Two-thirds of our runs is EMS, and I got a $5 million budget, it's about $3 million to run EMS. All this does is offset some of the cost for EMS and the tax burden.
But that's, no, 63% of the $5 million budget, though, would be...
63% of all runs, so if we take the same number, that, five that's $5 million, it's about two-thirds.
Two-thirds, so that's where, so I gotta look at the numbers.
Yeah, but they're fixed costs. The cost is the cost. Whether you guys make a run or you don't make a run, there's, that's, it's still the cost.
The only thing that changes is how we bill back any more EMS runs we do. The other thing is, down the road, we're gonna have more and more Medicare and Medicaid, so the offset of these numbers is gonna get down to 923, it could get down to $800,000. Now, that's a taxpayer more of a burden, but we raise rates to keep up with those costs.
And that goes to Jim's point, when you have a static number, and it's, and the Medicare, the expenses for doing it are going up, let alone, that's not even the expenses, it can also be the numbers of, of people who are taking transport, so that, that increase can go up at a higher rate, which I understand.
Can I just throw one thing out there?
One last pitch, if you don't mind, because...
Well, it's a pitch. In, in the hopes of not having to make this like a three-meeting bid on you, would the board consider adopting an increase in the BLS and the ALS equal to the Medicare increase that was, that the federal government adopted?
What did they adopt?
So every year they increased the medic, the reimbursement Medicare rate, and like your social security check, it goes up smidge. So I can remember when it was like 386 and now it's like 456, or somewhere around there. Is that something the board would consider? That we increase it the same amount that Medicare went up? So we're not getting any more than we were before, we're keeping pace with the Medicare reimbursement. Our rates and the Medicare reimbursement are doing this, they're going up the same percentage.
Aren't they, but aren't, if we charge 1,200 for a run, Medicaid says they're only gonna...
It applies to everybody else. It applies to anyone that has secondary insurance or to any of the other, the other insurances.
To go up the same percentage that Medicaid goes up.
Well, give us that, we're not gonna pull that tonight, but give us the numbers and we can look at it.
Okay.
Uh, how about this? You are on April 23rd, okay? We'll go over it one last time. Unfortunately, my, my mind's getting kind of all mixed up right now at 10:25, it's been a long day.
After 45 minutes of $12 million numbers, you don't think that this is an easy one?
So I'm gonna, and I am gonna meet with...
This is a general negotiation.
Well, first, one thing, we haven't had the library's generator yet either, so it's, I'm gonna meet with Lorraine, and I'm going to take a look at our agenda so that we're not jamming things in.
Yeah, I think we have to consider, I mean, I get it, I just think we have to consider it, you know, and I think, I don't think we raise rates because we can, because we could pick anything.
I mean, essentially, we think we raise rates because our costs have gone up.
That's what I wanted to say.
I understand where you're going, I understand the, what do you want us to bring us back to? I'll give you the Medicare percentage for that period, what else would you like?
I think it's just basically...
What do you mean, for that period?
Well, we haven't raised rates since 2011, I'll give you the Medicare rate for...
No, give us, it is, we're starting today.
I know, but I was gonna tell, so you could see what's going on.
Okay, yeah, you're not gonna get the cumulative rate, okay, that's what I thought you were saying.
Come on, that would've been a nice score, but you're not gonna do it for me, so...
Yes, if you could do that, so we have an idea since 2011. The cost, as it's split out between, so to me, it's like, okay, what's the general cost? Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and other insurances pay it, I get it, and then we get the deficit by Medicare and Medicare, and what's that cost to us?
It'd be great if you could get us, you know what would be good? If you could get us an indication of what insurance pays and what the public pays. I don't know if you can get it, but that would be interesting.
But am I able to get to the industry's average?
Yeah, 'cause there's a million different plans.
Yeah, but we can...
No, but you would know what you bill out, you would know...
Yeah, I mean, the way it's set up is those who are insured are subsidizing the uninsured.
Very few uninsured.
You're insured, don't... You're 26,000 dollars.
Oh, Medicaid, right, they're subsidizing the federal government.
So the people that have insurance is all we're talking about here, really, about the insurance.
And I'll tell you what, we'll put this on at the beginning of the agenda because you've been waiting a long time, chief, and, so...
I'm understanding that with us.
Appreciate that.
Give me an answer.
All right, moving on. All right, so we're on the, read the Easter Rising Proclamation.
We actually don't have to read it.
We don't have to read it.
No, we've just announced...
Right. The work has to be at the memoriam. Correct, is that the duties of the work?
To read the proclamation, I believe it's the chair at events you're supposed to represent us at.
Chair might not be there.
It's a must, right?
All right, the other one is the discussion vote, board policies and procedures. What do you think I'm, yes?
The chair, who did not oppose the warrant.
Get down there, we haven't finished that, we're gonna go back down to that one. So, saying that it's 10:30 and we're talking about procedures and policies, it's like, when I suggest, we can put this on at the next meeting. What does the board feel about that?
Isn't this just accepting the policies from last year?
It's from two years ago.
Oh, but I've edited them.
Oh, oh, okay.
I think we need the whole board to be here for this, for it anyway.
Well, one of your policies is you're supposed to have the whole board here, the whole policy, so...
Maybe you could provide me with your comments and I could edit?
So if you could provide, Lorraine, with any comments?
I'd like to.
Yeah, that would be very helpful. Because we did it originally, that's the reason why I got delayed.
I think your individual, well, I think it needs a fresh look.
I was gonna say, I don't even know what my comments were, but I guess I did do...
She'll tell you what you said. I think it's a great exercise.
All right, so we'll put this one on, the next one, Lorraine, please.
Okay.
Moving right along, new business.
Only narrow.
How about a discussion vote, one-day wine and malt licenses?
All right, hold on.
My computer's not functioning.
We'll get there.
Oop, here we go.
What page?
Uh, well, that's the policy, hang on.
Move board selectmen approve one-day malt liquor license to tailor-made bartending for an event at the Situate Maritime Center on April 6, 2019, from 2 to 3 p.m.
Second. Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. Harris. Discussion, did you say from when to when?
Two to, oh, right, two to eight, it's so small I can't, I said two to three, but it is two to eight.
Two to eight, okay. Clarification, that's all. All in favor?
Aye. Can you read it okay, Tony?
Tony, read this one.
I'll make it larger.
Here it is.
No, no, I can just lean right into the screen. Oops, I just...
I'll get your magnifying glass.
I just moved the silly thing. Someone else have it up?
How about a motion for tailor-made bartending?
Move board selectmen approve one-day wine and malt license to tailor-made bartending for an event at Situate Maritime Center on April 16, 2019, from 11 a.m. to 3 p.m.
Motion by Mr. Harris, seconded by Ms. Canfield. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Finally, move the board selectmen approve a one-day wine and malt license to tailor-made bartending for an event at the Situate Maritime Center on April 20, 2019, from 12 o'clock noon to 4 o'clock, 4 p.m.
Motion by Mr. Harris, seconded by Ms. Canfield. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 That's unanimous, 156. Moving on to a discussion vote, sewer betterment deferral, parcel identification, 14-01-032.
A motion, sir?
And this is just that somebody's seeking a deferral, they're gonna be paying the betterment as well as the interest, it's just that for hardship purposes, they're not able to do it at this time. Yes?
Move to grant a sewer betterment deferral for current year taxes for parcel ID 14-01-032.
Motion by Ms. Canfield, seconded by Mr. Harris. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, that's unanimous. Now, let's go on to the next one, which happens to be...
Alcohol license?
Um, yeah, I'm gonna recuse myself because I'm on the board of directors, so...
Yeah.
How about, who's, now, seeing that my vice chair's not here, who's gonna have to be chair of this one? Sean, you're the senior, so I'm happy to have Sean.
I'll move that the board of selectmen approve the renewal for an on-premise seasonal club all alcohol beverage license to the Situate Beach Association. Second.
Absolutely not, just kidding.
Second. All those in favor? Further discussion?
Tony did that right.
I know, I, I thought he was gonna be chair.
I'll move you second.
All right. I think Tony made that motion and Karen seconded it, and all, three to zero in favor. Move the board of selectmen approve an indoor entertainment license for the Situate Beach Association, Monday through Sunday, from 12 p.m. till 12 a.m. I have a motion, how about a second?
Second.
Thank you, Karen. All those in favor, oh, one question, okay. This is the same as last year, right?
Yes.
All right. I don't think this, yep, all right, great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, three to zero. Well done.
Sean, you're a little rusty there.
I know I am, it's late, too.
I'm gonna give you the gavel there. All right, now we're going back to the discussion vote, special town meeting warrant for May 13, 2019. Let me go down to it, which is on page...
Uh, 158, I think.
Yep.
Uh, 158, is there a motion? Is there any discussion about this?
Move that the board of selectmen...
We have to change the number, right?
Approve the warrant for May 13, 2019, special town meeting contingent upon any further changes by town council and/or town administrator.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Canfield, seconded by Mr. Harris. Discussion, Tony had mentioned about, do we need to change the number? At this point, Jim, that we don't correct, because it's, you know, even though the one that was proposed here is for 11.9, we don't need to...
We'll change it to 12.2.
12, 232, 450.
All right, so do we need to reflect that? We probably should.
I would.
All right.
I'm sorry, what's the number?
12, 232, 450.
That's 12,232,450. So is there a motion to amend Mr., was it Harris or was it Jurek's motion? Whose motion was it?
None.
Ms. Canfield's motion.
Yes.
To reflect that the amount should be 12,232,450.
Can I move on my own?
So moved.
So, a motion by Ms. Canfield to amend her motion to reflect the accurate number, seconded by Mr. Vignani. You wait back there, Ruth?
No.
Just checking on you. All those in favor to amend the, the, the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, that's unanimous, and I'll finally to go with the motion she actually proposed, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
There we go. I think I just cleaned that up.
Good job.
All right, anything else on that one? No. Now, let's go down to assign annual special town meeting warrant articles. Okay, now, if you go to page 161...
In front of you, I put a sum.
Oh, thank you so much.
One page.
Thank you, Lorraine, that's very, very helpful.
So, here it is here.
John, you wanna take care of it?
I don't think we need a consent agenda. I wanna stay until 2:00 in the morning, I wanna come back for a second day if need be, and if need be, do three, how about that? Forget the consent. All right, so I think we said this last week or two weeks ago, the special town meeting, the first three are mine, as chair, so I'll take those three, Lorraine. Second, I'll take articles one through four, which again are usually the purview of the chair.
Okay, do you wanna carve, carve out the consent agenda ones?
Yeah, what if we consented?
Well, you should assign them in case someone takes them off.
Right.
For some objection, you wanna have someone...
Yep.
So I'm sorry, John, you're doing, I got...
I'm doing one through three in the special, and I'm doing one through four in the annual.
Thanks, John.
Get on my back, everybody, okay?
Then you leave.
Then I'm leaving you. All right, so now we have, ideally, what I think would be great, instead of having people get up and get down like a whack-a-mole, why don't we just have like, you know, three people get up and get down like a whack-a-mole, why don't we just have like, you know, three or four in a row? So we got the enterprise fund for water, golf, wastewater, transfer...
All the enterprise.
And the water. So that would be...
I don't know why that's on there twice.
Waterways.
Waterways.
Second one. Now it would be waterways. It would be water enterprise.
The other thing is you've got... Two of them could go through.
Could go away. Right.
So why don't we... Would somebody be willing to do 5 through 9?
I will, if that's all right, unless Tony, if someone else wants, all right.
Will I do all the enterprise ones? Sean, or you want me...
Whatever. You wanna grab golf and you wanna...
No, I don't care.
Yeah, don't split them.
No, if you wanna grab 5 and 6, and then I'll do...
Well, I'm gonna do probably CPC.
Okay. Let me just put my initials next to those and then we'll...
You can do all those, never mind.
So then we have the stabilization fund... Okay, so Sean's got 5 through 9, Lorraine.
Yeah.
Now, 10 is the stabilization fund excess levy.
I'll do 10 through 17.
10 through 17.
They're all the consent ones.
He's so smart, that Tony.
And I'll do 18.
I wanna do 18.
No, you can do 18.
Okay, so Tony's gonna take 10 through 17.
All right.
I'll do something at the end.
Well, you bet you will.
Yeah.
Okay, now, 18 is the adoption of the room occupancy excise tax, and...
So you wanna go down... I was thinking it... I was thinking of doing the green bush zoning, which is gonna be a big thing, just as the planning lays on, unless somebody really feels strongly that they wanna do it.
Why don't you do...
So if that's the case, I would go from 18 to 23.
Okay. Don't forget Mara. She won't feel left out.
She's gonna... She mentioned she'd take Ellis. So we got the general bylaw amendment, and then Ellis, 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 that's 25, 26, 27.
Give those to...
She'd do all those.
Yeah.
Is Mara doing 24, 5, 6, and 7?
Yeah.
Yep.
Good job, Mara.
And that's Tony. Tony only gets one. That's great.
I'll do one of these last three.
And then we have the zoning map for Hammerock. Jim might do that one.
Wait, where's the capital part?
And then we have the petition article for the termination of Lee. That's not ours, really. I guess...
The last three are petition.
We're petition, so we're just giving up the...
I'll do 29. We go up and give an opinion.
Do you want me to take 30?
Sure.
Yeah, just an opinion, right?
Right. I have an opinion.
And 28, I'll do 28 also, if you want, I don't care. And what's someone else supposed to do?
So you're gonna...
John, you wanna do one at the end?
The building, the temporary deferment of the building?
The Hammerock zoning thing? Oh, the bang.
I still got another special town meeting coming up. Yeah, I'm happy to take the Hammerock if need be. Jim and I'll do it.
Hammerock or 30?
I'll take Hammerock.
So 28 is John Daney, 29 is Tony Vignani, and 30 is Karen Campbell.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, John, you've got...
So Sean states again.
Oh, I got a big bunch in there.
I got the Hammerock zoning one.
Wait, so, John...
Do you guys wanna change it up?
Where's, um... So the Capitol plant's turf...
That means that really, so if you're doing CPC...
And where's CPC?
You might wanna be...
That's Tony.
...to get up, maybe we'll share it, because it's gonna come out to the turf issues.
Well, you'll take care of them all first, probably.
Get on my back, you're right, I'll take care of it.
You wanna split up the CPC projects one through 11?
No, I'll do them. They're easy. These are gonna be easy. I'm gonna...
Jesus, Tony.
I'm gonna guy come there and like plow the road, you're just gonna make it like drive right down it, you know?
Yeah, Mara did... I don't know if she said to you, she did say that if you want, like, the school thing, she's happy to... The rec project of the CPC fields thing, so, okay.
Well, just on the rec project, we're gonna have to have a discussion with the moderator tomorrow, because the field project's in two places.
Yeah.
So John's doing the capital, Tony's doing the community preservation, but what I wanna talk to the moderator about is how do we vote on those at the same time, so there's not a vote here and then a vote here half an hour, an hour later?
No, they could be completely separate. Some, you could vote for the turf and not vote for the...
Correct.
Not vote for the other.
Yeah, correct.
So they're not... They're linked, but they're not tied.
But it's... You don't wanna have it debate twice, Tony, is what I'm saying. You just wanna have that debate once. It's gonna be two separate votes, but let's vote on them, have the debate, and vote on them at the same time, as opposed to have the debate as part of the capital budget, and then have the same debate again, or close to the same debate as part of the CPC budget.
And it would be...
They're not gonna debate. Once I finish it, Jim, everybody's gonna have their answers, and Tony's gonna have an easy time. I don't know if it'll come. Consent agenda, these are the ones that you're gonna recommend for consent agenda. All right. Those are articles 1, 2, 6, 8, 10, 11, 13. These are Tony's.
Yeah.
14, 15...
Tony, Tony.
16, 17. Tony only has one.
19, 20.
19, 20. And I think that's it.
Yeah.
Boy, if we can do that, that would be great.
But that's if it passes. Yeah.
Yeah. Lorraine, do you have that all, then?
Yes, I do.
All right. That takes care of that?
They're not gonna pass. I'm gonna be saying...
I was just gonna say, just tell for Tony, hold, hold.
I'm getting even with ya.
That would be great. Silly. All right, where are we at? Other business?
Oh, we need to have...
Liaison reports? Are there any liaison reports? I don't think so.
Just the meeting of...
I can't even...
On Saturday.
You wanna do that?
Sure. We... There was a meeting for the Senior Center project on Saturday. John and I were at Pier 44, Cituate Community Building, and a great turnout, about 100 people there, good discussion, all of it seemed to be proactive, so that was nice, and I think they did a great job describing the plan to people, so, you know, again, they're doing their community outreach to everybody, and Linda did a great job as well explaining, you know, the senior services and what have you, so...
No, I pretty much summarized it.
Thursday before that, there weren't nearly as many people in the library, Linda, as well as J.D., spoke. And at that particular meeting, they said there were a lot of the same faces, but still they were out there. I'm sure that there were some new ones, but not nearly 100 people, but still.
One of the things I'd mentioned to Linda was that maybe one of the meetings that we could think about, they could think about trying to structure, is to go to the actual site at the old Gates High School, maybe put some stakes down to kinda give an impression of like where the buildings would be, and take a tour maybe of the gymnasium and kinda see where things are.
They were open to having more meetings, forums.
Right. And I was thinking, you know, after the annual town meeting, might be a good opportunity to go, people to go see the building, or the build, you know, the gates, depending if we can do it. But also open up Brook Street, so they can also see the current facility, so at least it'd be a good opportunity to kinda get a sense of it. Anyway, that was that. Anything else?
Let Karen go first.
I mean, this, I just want... I mean, we wanted to talk about the fields presentation is gonna be at the library in the common room on April...
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Tomorrow at 6:30. So that'll be... Is any... Are any of us planning on being there?
I'm gonna go.
I...
When is it?
Tomorrow night.
I was planning on probably going to it also.
Okay.
I have middle school.
And that'll be...
It was gonna be me or you, and I think Lorraine had asked, but I was gonna try to get there myself.
I have the middle school, right, as well as waterways, so...
Anything else?
I don't remember.
Other business?
Other business, yeah.
Jim, I know it's quarter of 11, you're not... may not have any answers now, but would you please... And I should've mentioned it when Kevin was here, and I just wanted to move things along. The building on Tac Factory Pond Road for the well, you know, the folks have reached out to us, we've taken walks, we've all seen the...
I had some plans today. I got some cost estimates from Kevin, but only one of the plans came through.
Okay.
It shows various iterations of where we can move the building to, in terms of distance from houses and what that will cost to do it. But I didn't get all the plans. Once I get all the plans, I can send them out there.
You know, we've all walked out there, we saw the, what is now a car path, really, not much more than that, to gain access, there is a building out there. So I saw all the flags, I saw some trees down, some small stuff, but, you know, again, just keep in mind that...
Yeah, Kevin has told the residents, we'll move it back to the extent we can move it back.
Okay.
And we can, like I said, I have the cost estimates, but you can't see... I didn't have to draw it to show you where the buildings are, so I wanted to wait for those, and I can send them out to you. Some are short dollars, some are really expensive.
To move it?
To move it and flip the building around, yeah. Because if you look at the plans, it's the building, and then behind the building is where they would unload. If you wanted to flip that, you'd have to redesign the entire inside of the building because of the way everything is aligned with the well coming out, so it'd be significantly more expensive to flip the building so they have the truck on their side, but to move the building back. It's hard to say without the picture, but if I show you the picture, that's what I was talking about.
If, you know, if they're bringing on... If they're planning on bringing on chemicals there in any type of tractor-trailer, that is... They're gonna have to just make that road so much wider. Right now, you could get a four-wheel-drive pickup or something like that, you know, maybe something a little bigger, but have you been down there, Jim?
Yeah, but if you go down there, the road, there's a new road, so where the road now goes down and takes the left and takes a right...
Right.
The new road, this is gonna be hard, but if you have the gate here, the gate poles, the new road almost goes like this. Instead of going down and around, it goes down kind of along the fence line, so it's almost coming, almost coming in straight, and then turns to the right, so... You can see it on the plan, but there's a new road in there, too, Sean.
See, I saw surveyors, you know, I saw flags, blue, pink, I saw stakes, I read them, but I didn't... I don't know if they're benchmarks or...
Some are gonna be weapons.
That wasn't the road, 'cause that road now is gonna be right along that property line.
Yeah, see, that's what I didn't even know, but I was, you know, I was walking.
You wouldn't get a tractor-trailer down and around that corner.
That's a mistake.
So, you'll see it on the plans, but I just, again, there's three different options, and I only had one of the plans, so I didn't wanna send it out the other two, 'cause I would get five emails back saying where the other two plans. So I should have those tomorrow.
All right.
We definitely can move it, just a matter of where and how much.
Okay, all right.
Anything else?
Correspondence, we have some kind of important... That's how many dates?
There is a notice from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Alcohol Beverage Control Commission, notice of a delisting hearing for Jamie's, scheduled for May 21, 2019, at 12:00 p.m., related to his license because of the fire.
And this has nothing to do with sewage, or septic, or a tight tank?
No.
The water's left and done, it's just separate apart?
Yeah, he was... He had to go through this last year as well with the commission. Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Telecommunications and Cable has sent a letter dated March 20 to the board, the issuing authority, that will hold a public and evidentiary hearing to investigate the proposed basic service tier programming, equipment, and installation rates. On... The hearing will be held 11:00 a.m. Tuesday, May 21, in hearing room 1E at 1,000 Washington Street in Boston. If you'd like more details, the letter is at the selectman's office. Commonwealth, uh... Is this the same one? Uh, yeah, we got another, you know, just a notice, which I assume will be posted with those dates. And, hold on. Lots of contacts. The Massachusetts Clean Water Trust has written to Mr. Bedrow on March 15 to congratulate the town of Cituate on having its project added to the 2019 intended use plan. This is Jim, do you wanna summarize this, so...
This is the town, the Green Sand Filter...
Yep.
Is eligible for the no loan interest loans through the Water Pollution Trust, through the Water Trust. That's all.
Estimated cost of 10, $8 million.
Yep.
The savings estimated at 1.123 million. Just so Mr. Vignani can hear that. There's... We brought... Jim already mentioned the Senior Center Red Sox Trophy this Wednesday at the Harbor Community Building from 3:00 to 5:30. And I think that's all the correspondence, Lorraine?
Yep, and somebody already mentioned the athletic field presentation.
Yep. Tomorrow.
Well, the only thing I have to say is, you know, if you see Mark, wish her her birthday, it's on April 4, so, what is it? That's Thursday. Say happy birthday to her.
You're dead and scared of that.
Also to Michelle, Michelle Segaze, wanna wish her a happy birthday. She's probably watching us right now. Great dedication. And so in event, just wanna wish her a happy birthday and many more. Aside from that, I think we are going to have the approval of our minutes, and in particular, we have the minutes from March 19, our last board of selectmen meeting. And for all those eager beavers who wanna know what we talk in executive session, we're releasing our minutes from last Monday, March 26, 2019, to see what was said and what was discussed. Aside from that, motion for...
Motion to accept the minutes from March 19, 2019, board of selectmen meeting.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Canfield, seconded by Mr. Vignani. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to accept and release the executive session minutes for the March 26, 2019, board of selectmen meeting.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Canfield, seconded by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aside from that, how about the next motion?
Move for attorney and signed documents?
Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Ms. Canfield. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Goodnight, folks.